Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers so much for a fun-filled, yet affordable, family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with ramp and dock, free rowboats and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. You'll enjoy our attractive waterfront and beachside accommodations. So visit us online at gogreenharbor.com.
I'll call our meeting to order. Board of Selectmen, Monday, December 7th, 2015. I invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda are announcements. I'll first announce that the board has just returned from executive session on discussing litigation, discussing the wind turbine litigation, the Okagawa versus EVA in the town of Falmouth. We heard from the lawyer for Mrs. Okagawa requesting that this case be dismissed with prejudice, and the Board of Selectmen has voted to agree to that dismissal. And also, we discussed the collective bargaining with the firefighters. On other announcements, I just want to announce what a wonderful weekend it was in the town of Falmouth. We had quite a few events that went on this weekend. The two I want to mention briefly are at the Lighting of the Green, with the lighting of the lights on the village green on Saturday evening at 7:00. Was the largest event I've seen in the town of Falmouth this time of the year. I remember when, years ago, when I was growing up, my father and Jean Phillips in the AFS group used to get together seeing carols on the green, and I think there might have been 15 or 20 people. One year, when it was pouring terribly, my father and I were the only ones there. But it was wonderful. I ran into a high school classmate of mine. I ran to Mr. Phillips's two daughters there this past evening, and it was just a fantastic event. And also, I want to congratulate the Chamber of Commerce for the rerouting of the parade, and what a fantastic event that was on Sunday, that the Christmas parade went off, I think, more smoothly and safely than it could possibly be imagined. And congratulate everyone who was involved in that. And I know we had a wonderful time while participating in that on Sunday. And we'll have a wonderful winter holidays for the next few weeks to enjoy also. Any other announcements from the board? We have time for public comment. If anyone would like to speak on something that is not on our agenda, please limit your comments to two minutes. All right, we'll move on to our minutes. Approval of minutes. First is the minutes from November 16th. We had held these from the previous meeting. I think these are the public session minutes from November 16th.
I'll move approval.
Mr. Patterson?
A second, but with a possible edit.
Okay.
This is Monday, November 16th, correct?
Yep, on the public session.
If you look under number three, sort of below that, where it says Chairman, ask the Board of Selectmen to consider whether they wanted to consider vetting an easement at, and it should be Bayside Drive, East Falmouth. There's a question mark there, it was left blank.
Okay.
So just fill that in.
Bayside Drive, this is page one.
Page one.
Page one, number three.
Yep.
Number three, I guess it's just what follows thereafter.
Okay. Any other items on those minutes? We got a motion, a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Those minutes. Next are the public session, November 23rd. Those are the ones we've just received tonight, and so I would like us that we wait to approve those until our next meeting. Next are the executive sessions from October 19th. And these are the ones we had held on from last time. And this is a discussion on the litigation with Mast EP and Buzzes Bay Coalition. And I think our question is whether we could vote to release these. We could vote to accept them, but whether we could release them.
I see no reason not to release them.
Okay.
My review, so I would vote to approve and release the minutes of October 19th, 2015.
So the motion to approve and to release the item number one from the executive session on litigation, discussing litigation with Mast EP and Buzzes Bay Coalition.
Correct.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Patterson, Ms. Moran, motion of second, and we'll approve that. Okay. And then we have the executive session minutes on November 16th. Item number one was the litigation, discussing pending wind turbine litigation, Okagawa versus EVA in the town of Falmouth. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I would recommend that we strike the last sentence in paragraph two. Discuss the town council, and it's ambiguous as a state.
This is the one that starts with Attorney Duffy?
No, it says every time.
Since the CEC.
Since the CEC is the.
Okay, so third paragraph.
Sorry.
Right, okay. All right. We have that change?
I move approval as edited.
Second.
Motion, a second, Mr. Patterson, Ms. Moran.
And not to release.
And not to release, yes.
To approve and not to release. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. And next is the executive session. This is discussing pending wind turbine litigation on the Laird and Elder versus EVA in the town of Falmouth.
And that's for November 16?
Yes.
Move approval?
Aren't they the same ones?
One was dealing with the Okagawa case, and the other one, they are actually two different pages.
Why not?
Second.
Okay.
The motion, a second, from Moran and Mr. Patterson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. The ayes have it.
And that was not to release.
No, sorry, not to release. Next, we have discussion authorization for the bond anticipation notes. Ms. Petit.
Good evening. I was asked to be put on the agenda every year around this time, and the paperwork's a lot less this year than it was last year from when we had piles up here. We have a borrowing, there was a memo in your packet of 13 million for the wastewater management plan, and then 3 million for the Lawrence School windows. We are borrowing that on a short-term basis for a year, and the principal, the end, we'll be paying an interest payment of 0.51 percent on that next year. And so I'm just asking for the vote to accept the bid and to vote the $15 million in bond anticipation notes, and then we can, I'll answer any questions you may have, and then we can take the paperwork and slide it along the desk if you'd like.
I move approval.
Is anyone else struck by getting a half of a percent?
I know, that's pretty amazing, isn't it?
For a year alone in this? Am I wrong?
It is amazing.
Okay.
It's a net, it's about 75,000 in interest that we'll be paying for a year on 15 million dollars, so it's good to do it now. I think the interest rates will be increasing, so we're really, you know, not spending, you know, we're really saving on interest here. The way we're trying to pay down some principal is really helping us as well. I do want to let you know, over the next two years, we will be bonding probably 78 million through the trust with the two major projects that were, you know, the water treatment and the wastewater management. But right now, we're just going to do this for some cash flow purposes. We have a lot of other notes that outstanding. I came in front of the board in May, but we're short-term borrowing for some other things through the trust. This is, these are for things outside the trust.
And is our good rate related, is this one of the ones that's related to what our rating is, or is it just cleverness on your part to find this?
Well, both.
Because it's a local bank.
We did, our rating, you know, we did have a conversation with Standard and Poor's, and they did change it from standard to positive. We are working towards, you know, making that even more positive in the next year. So there, you know, we have a lot, we have reserves, we're really handling our finances very well. The board has, you know, the budget policy will be coming to in the next year with maybe trying to tighten up our financial policies a little bit more. I think the one that we have is from OSEC. I've already started on that. So, yeah, I think, you know, there'll be definitely, you know, there is good news, we're doing very well, and, you know, good news to come.
Ms. Flynn?
What is our bond rating right now?
Our bond rating is a double A+.
Double A+. Excellent.
Ms. Moffett, do you have?
Same question.
All right, I think we had a motion from Mr. Patterson.
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Moran. Enter the discussion, Mr. Patterson.
Yeah, I guess I just thought maybe that Jennifer could actually explain what a bond anticipation note is to the general public, since it's kind of a specialty way of filling the gap as far as cash flow is concerned, as I understand it. Is that correct interpretation?
Yes. What we try to do is, especially, you know, with the two major projects that we're doing, you don't, a bond anticipation note is when you borrow a sum of money on a short-term basis. You'll borrow it for a year, you could borrow it for six months, you could borrow it for three months, and you're only going to pay interest on that. According to Mast general laws, you only can borrow short-term for a two-year period, and then you have to start paying down the principal and interest. And that's what we'll be doing, you'll probably, you know, in the next couple of years, we'll be going out to the market to bond over a 20- to 30-year period, and then we'll be paying principal and interest. But when you're in the middle of constructing a project, you really don't want to go out to the bond market, because, you know, we haven't finalized the costs yet. So that's really why we borrow on a short-term basis, and then at the end of the project, we can pay off some of the short-term note if we haven't used it all, or we might have to borrow a little bit more if we have more, you know, the authorized. But that's really why we do that. We want to bond exactly what we're spending, but during a project, we do need it for cash flow to pay for that project.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will.
You have some things to sign, I'm sure, for you?
Yeah, I'm going to start on one side of the table, if that's okay, and try to keep it together. There is a signature for the clerk, and I think the vice chair or the chair usually signs for the clerk, so I just want to sign where it says Board of Selectmen.
All right, our next item, we'll do some signing as we're discussing these issues, is an application for a new livery license. This is the Triple of V Transporter Incorporated. We have a healthy packet here. Do we have anyone from the applicant here tonight? Okay.
I had a few questions about this too, so I think if there's no one here, perhaps we could reschedule it so that we can ask questions about.
I'm fairly comfortable with that, and certainly was made clear in our documentation that they were hoped to be here so they could answer questions. Ms. Moffett?
I just had several questions here. I think there's a lot of blank spaces. I think there's information that needed to be, and it isn't in here, so I had a lot of questions on this.
So should we suggest a continuance until two weeks hence, at 7:15 again? So we have time and place certain? So we schedule this to our December 21st at 7:15.
Need a motion to anything?
Nope.
So move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. We will continue that. Next, under administrative orders, is to authorize the town manager to submit a letter of interest and full proposal to the Cape Cod Economic Development Council for grant application for budget-neutral municipal oyster propagation. Ms. Karples, or do you want to talk on this one? Great.
Hi, I'm Sia Karples. I am the technical consultant to the Water Quality Management Committee, and this is a grant for shellfish propagation in Horns Pond. It's basically replicating the project that is happening in Little Pond in our next estuary. It's a wonderful example of propagation that supports local shellfishers, commercial and recreational, and water quality improvement. So we're hoping that the Cape Cod Economic Development Council will fund this project for this year.
Question, Mr. Patterson?
Yeah. Sia, how big an area is it actually going to consume in acres?
This is a, this is, I would say, the first year viability, so it's only a half a million oysters that will be grown. So I would say approximately half an acre to an acre, I think, a small area that makes sure that Horns Pond is suitable.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yep.
Sia, what is the timeframe now in which the EDC is accepting grant applications?
It's due tomorrow before noon.
Okay. And I guess.
We'll get it in if the board so decides.
You'll get it in by tomorrow noon? I knew there was a short time period there, but I didn't realize it was.
And we'll find out December 22nd if they're asking us for the full proposal. So this is an authorization for the letter of intent, as well as the full proposal. So if we are given the letter of intent, we're just going to go ahead and submit.
Then I move approval of the grant request.
Second.
Okay, I still had a question. If you could go, as I was reading through it, and this is different than what we've done in the past as to what's going to happen with the propagated seed, is that correct?
That's right. Well, I wouldn't say that it's different, but it is an exploration of a different approach. And I think that is, it's sort of a distinction, but I think it's a meaningful one, in the sense that part of what we'd like to have the Economic Development Council fund is a look at the regulatory feasibility, practicality, the community, the business potential of actually selling some of this seed to private aquaculture operations. But there are a number of issues related to that, that the point of a demonstration is to try to get a handle on.
Well, my question, this may be, maybe Mr. Duffy can answer it, just because I know there are other issues in where we're going to have to deal with the same thing. If it becomes town property, if the initial seed is town property and becomes a town asset, disposing of town assets gets very, very complicated. And if we're then trying to sell a town asset, does that become something that has to be bid through a process that may make it more complicated than we really want it to be? And this is the same sort of thing when we went talking about with the compost facility. We could charge people to get in, but to actually charge people for if they wanted to take compost out, it technically is a town, piece of town property. And how do you get rid of stuff that the town owns in a way that is both legal and completely fair? And I'm not sure, this is completely off the cuff, Mr. Duffy, that's what I was saying you was to whether oyster seed that the town buys, grows, then wants to sell to a, for the agriculture farm is problematic or not.
Frank Duffy, Town Council, this really is kind of off the cuff, so to speak, but I'd be concerned because oyster seed probably has a definite shelf life. You'd certainly want to dispose of it quickly before it's spoiled or anything, and there are some exclusions and wiggle room in the Uniform Procurement Act, but I'm not prepared to tell you right now if there is.
So there may be some loopholes that make the sea seed.
Well, you know, we, there is an exception, for example, to the Uniform Procurement Act for the renting of boat slips. And it's a Falmouth amendment, because we realized that when they created the Uniform Procurement Act, they didn't provide for certain things that coastal communities have to do. So we pointed it out to them, and they changed the act. This may be another one of those where we might have to do it, but we'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Just on that subject, I want, it would be an interesting topic for the Cape Wide Water Coalition group, of which I'm the Board of Selectmen's appointee, and I wonder if we could share the seed with the other communities who just have a memorandum of understanding. So that's just another thing to look into.
So whether the seed gets sold to a business or gets shared?
Or Mashby uses it, or?
Other communities, maybe another way of getting the same kind of thing. Sam?
Well, part of the grant is to explore the mechanisms that would allow this sort of a thing to occur. It's a unique idea, it's a creative idea, but there are obviously practical regulatory aspects that we need to nail down before we move forward.
Sam?
I think a model for this is all the hatcheries that are supported by, you know, government agencies, in which, you know, you release fingerlings into whatever body of water you choose, you know, that they're going to survive in. And that's a public-to-private kind of subsidization, or whatever you want to say, or support of commercial activities.
Well, and remember, the, there's the Agricultural Research Corporation down in Dennis, it's been there for many years, and now it's gotten state money to actually, well, Brewster wanted to put a portion of it in conservation, because a lot of it is just marshland. And much of that land belongs to the town of Dennis, so they were able to put that in conservation, and then, so what's left wasn't as much. And it incorporates the Agricultural Research Corporation, which sells millions of seed, not only to all the towns on the Cape, the fishermen, but on the South Shore and across the country. I mean, it goes out of there by truck, by rail, by every means possible. They have a huge amount of seed that they create down there in Brewster, so. But this is good, to see how this works. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is to approve extension of the temporary license to use a portion of Depot Avenue bus station as a detour for a bike path. This has to do with the large tree at the bottom of Highfield Hill. Mr. McConney, can you give us a report, if you happen to know, as to what's happening with that tree, and how long we anticipate we're going to have to continue to detour around it?
Yes, good evening, Peter McConney, Deputy Director of Public Works. We had a consultant from Vermont come down to Falmouth back in October to look at the tree. It's a large tree, so it has to be, the cable, they're looking at a cabling system, it has to be designed for that particular tree. So they did come back down on, they'll be coming back down actually this week, December 12th of this week, so we'll be looking at in the next couple of months to have that cabling system anchored and put into place. The payments already been, the funding's already been secured for that. So we're looking just for an extension on this, and to get this to a bike, by the, by that time, we should be, the tree should be secured.
So the prognosis is good that the tree will be able to be secured?
The tree will be able to be secured, yeah. They, it has complications in that, it has the electrical lines going through it, so it's a, it's a different kind of, they looked at bending, they looked at cabling, and they decided on the cabling system.
Thank you. Any other questions on this issue?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion approved, motion, a second to approve the extension. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it. Next item is a special event, this is the recurring polar plunge, sponsored by Gosnold Inc. for Old Silver Beach. This is for Sunday, December 27th. Not sure, do we have anybody from the organization here to give us a encouragement to show up and get very cold?
Encouragement.
For a great cause, though?
It's an excellent cause.
Great to just introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Schwelm. I'm a recovery aide at Gosnold Katomet, our 30-day program. It's an excellent cause. If you look at statistics, four out of five American families are in some way affected by addiction, and then a lot of the money that is raised, or that this country spends on addiction, only 1% of it goes to prevention, and 1% goes to treatment. And Gosnold is dedicated to promoting prevention in this community, to finding different means to treat this epidemic that we have going on, and to really fun time. I did it last year, and I just think it's a great way to get the community involved and to kind of help work on ending the stigma surrounding addiction.
Unfortunately, the application is not in our packet, so I'm going to ask you to tell us exactly. I don't have it in my, in the purple packet, so I'll check in the other one. But you'll give us the exact details so we can hear it out loud, and as to when it is, what time it is, what you're hoping that people do.
It would be the Sunday right after Christmas, the 27th, and the event, usually registration would start about, we doing 10:30?
10:30.
And the plunge right at noon time, and then it pretty, it wraps up pretty quickly. People want to get back into war, so.
And part of it is, I mean, it's a fundraiser also, so there's the registration fee to be given the privilege to.
Yes, you raise, I think last year, we raised almost 10,000, and, but there's no requirement to do it. It's a suggested donation of even $5 to do it, but anyone can join in.
And you can choose to get sponsors to sponsor you to do it also?
Yeah, if you'd like to.
It's an in-and-out event.
Yes, yes, it is.
A few years ago, Mr. Murphy challenged Mr. Braga and me to participate, and I remember it quite well.
I have pictures of that.
Yeah.
I hope not.
I think Mrs. Flynn and I were there watching.
All right, any other questions on this?
Motion to approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have our quarterly report from, on the Police Department from Chief Dunn.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Pleased to announce that the Police Department is fully staffed with 58 offices, filling the 58 funded positions that we have. Currently, though, we only have 54 available for work, and here's why. One is on light duty, from an injury about a year ago. He's still recovering, however, we're using him on light duty, and he's assisting us in central records. The other three positions are from the most recent graduates. They are in field training, and they will be ready probably sometime shortly after Christmas to be out on the run. So that way, we will have, we'll be up to 58 officers on, be able to work the streets. We're also pleased to announce that our dispatch positions are all filled to. First time in a long time the department's been fully staffed. We hired a 16-hour dispatcher for Saturday and Sunday, and we've got the full-time midnight dispatcher that's also been filled, so pleased to announce that. Officer Bradley, an updated officer Bradley, he's the officer that was injured in the motor vehicle accident June 27th. He's still recovering. Pleased to announce that all his braces and everything that he had on have been removed, and he's continuing to make good progress through physical therapy, so pleased to announce that. So pleased to announce that. Our Detective Division, from August till November, we've had 18 undercover buys, we've had nine warrant arrests, three search warrants. On seizures, we've seized $6,143, drug seizure investigations, one motorcycle. And in Superior Court, we have one indictment pending in the Superior Court system. The defendants that we have arrested have been charged with distribution of a Class A, B, and D, which is heroin, cocaine, fentanyl, marijuana. And the narcotics that we've purchased are marijuana, cocaine, heroin, fentanyl, and crack cocaine. Also pleased to announce, and you may have seen it on our Facebook page, that we, a citizen discovered in the woods about 260-something grams of heroin the other day. So that's somewhere around $30,000 worth of drugs off the street. And we're currently working on trying to decide, develop information as to who actually own those drugs, and we're going to proceed with that criminally also. Overdoses, as of today, we've had 121 overdoses. Of those overdoses, we've had nine deaths. The offices have initiated, used the Narcan that we currently carry in all our cruises eight times. And that sounds low, but most of the time, the fire department is called before we're called, so they've used many more doses of Narcan. Related to that, we've had 15 opiate-related deaths in this quarter. We've had a total of 45 opiate-related arrests since the beginning of the year. These people that have been charged with dealing in opiates. We continue to partner with our Gosnold Treatment Center, Sergeant Seminow, going out with a Gosnold Recovery Coach to make the home visits. And 56 home visits from March to November have been done. And at this time, I believe we've had two victims from these, that have entered treatment. And we've had two people that were Section 35 by their family, that's for medical, through the courts, they've gone to court to get them committed to a treatment facility, so. And we've worked with those families, too. Another note on that, where we're on the opiates, is we continue to work with the community and team leaders for the Opiate Summit that will be coming up, that the Police Department has, along with other agencies, have sponsored. And the Opiate Summit will be held at the Seacrest, January 7th and January 8th, and there will be more about that in the paper. But currently, right now, we've had several meetings, and team leaders of the projects will be meeting again, I believe this week, with Captain and the, and the team, to set the agenda for the community meeting summit in January. So stand by to hear more about that, we'll have it on our Facebook page and also be posted in the paper. A similar program that we've initiated was with, Falmouth Human Services, is dealing with mental health issues. And we've partnered with them, and we have Officer Tylinne Bond and, I believe, Mark Abbott from Human Services. They also have made home visits, and this is kind of like a catch-up. We hadn't been dealing with it, other than responding as a police department, taking them to the hospital, and responding again and taking them to the hospital. So that's why we came up with this program. And so far, since we've initiated the program, we've had 43 home visits. We have 132 incidents related to mental health. So we're trying to catch up with that. In fact, this week, I believe they plan on going out to visit some more homes. And then, once they're caught up, we will probably do the programs similar to what we're doing with the opiates, where we'll go out at least once or twice a month so that we're caught up. But right now, we're playing catch-up so that we can make the visits for those 132 incidents that we had. Calls for service in this quarter. Self-initiated calls, 5,077. Dispatch calls, 4,021. For a total of 9,098 calls for service. Domestic violence, from January through November, let's see here, we've had 381 domestic violence calls, 143 restraining orders. A domestic violence advocate specialist has served 173 victims. And the advocate has also attended a two-day Driving a Change conference. It's for Domestic Violence High-Risk Team, so we're very pleased about that. Bring that, bring those numbers down. Events, the parade went well, as you all were in there, that went well, we had no issues. The new route seemed to work. What the Police Department has going on now is the stuff a cruiser event. We had it last Saturday at Walmart, and I'm pleased, last year, we had over, I think it was like 100, 450 toys in around that area. Last Saturday, we had over 350 toys already in one day. This community has come together and really showing, you know, what this community is made out of, and there are going to be some children having some great, great Christmases this year. We have two more events, Saturday, December 12th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And Sunday, December 13th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Again, at Walmart, the cruiser will be there. I think we're going to need a bigger cruiser if it continues. I can tell you, the toys are all, there are some pictures on Facebook, our Facebook page, the Detective Division looks like a toy store, and I'm very happy about that, too, so that's great. And we also will accept toys 24/7 at the Police Department, if you can't make it to those events and people want to, bring some toys in. Another new program that we're starting, similar to our Citizens Police Academy, we're going to be doing an after-school program with the Morse Pond School, a junior police academy. And that's going to be coordinated by Sergeant Cummings, who is our coordinator for the Citizens Police Academy. And we just felt we were missing that, that relationship with that age. And it's going to be in relation to their after-school program, so it won't put their parents out, because the children would normally be staying after school for those, whatever programs that they would be participating in. And we will either be teaching it at the school, or we'll be walking them over to the police station through the back, and we'll make sure they're back there in time for their rides home and things like that. And that may be one or two days a week, depending on the school's schedule. So we're really excited about that program, and get, and get that age group involved with the police work and things like that. And other than that, Police Department hopes everybody has a happy and safe holiday. I'm going to be here to answer any questions.
Could you explain to me what a home visit, you mentioned it several times in a number of times?
Yeah, what the home visit is, is like I said, we partnered with the Life Coach at Gosnold, and we partnered with Mark Abbott from the Falmouth Human Services. And our officers are in plainclothes, and we go with these counselors to the homes to visit the individuals who have, in the opiate case, the individuals who have had overdoses. If you've had an overdose this week, within the next week or two, we will go and visit those people. And with the life coach, we're not, we're not there as looking for law enforcement information, if they want to give it to us, that's great, but that's not the point. The point is, we're there to assist, we're there to let them know that service is available, and that's why the life coaches is there. And it's the same with the mental health piece, is that a lot of people really don't know what services are available to them. So we're there, we're there basically to assist and protect the counselors, to make sure that they're safe, and that's what we've been doing. And founded very, very, people are opening their arms to us, and they're really, really pleased that we're there. Karen was here, and I think the first, the first group that we went out the first time was remarkable. People, people were really pleased to see and be able to know that services that are available to them. Even though they are available to them here, they don't, they don't go looking for it. So we're trying to present it to them. And it's the same with the opiate piece. By taking the life coach from Gosnold, he can tell them what is available for them. He's an individual that has gone through what they've gone through, and to let them know that, you know, they're not alone, and that there are services out there, and try to get them into treatment. So we, we go to them, instead of them coming to us.
And the, and our officers go for special training?
Our officers have had training, but our officers are depending on the counselors that are with us, with them. Withers pretty much there for their protection and to assist them any way we can.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you very much. I guess we'll now move right on to parking.
Have a slide presentation.
Oh, Lance. Heather's not here, so I don't know.
Just put it in the side.
Chief, I cannot...
Oh, yay.
Yeah, thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Almost ready?
Is it...
Over that one.
Should be. Parking meter? Okay, you can go to the next slide, please. I'm going to give you a little history lesson, for much as I, I know about it at this point, and what I've learned about it, is currently, the town owns 123 meters. The meters were purchased in 2005, so they're 15 years old. And they run on what is called a circuit board system compared to the gear system, which are really old. We have meters in the steamship lot, they're over 30 years old. And they do run on the gear style timing. The steamship lot meters are at end-of-life, and we're really are unable to get any parts. We've pretty much cannibalized what we have to make them work. And we've had an increasing number of complaints regarding the meters being broken or inaccurate. And that's more on the circuit board ones. I think currently, right now, we have somewhere between 15 or 20 circuit boards that are broken, and they're about $150, $200 apiece. Other complaints that I've, I've heard while I've been down there is, there's no place to get coins, or if you don't have coins with you, a lot of the stores, and I really don't blame them, don't want to be giving up their change so you can feed the meter. So that's been a complaint. Next slide. Also, prior to Main Street's renovation, there were meters on Main Street, those of you who might remember. And Main Street has approximately 130 parking spots. Pagnudon Park area has, the area behind Pagnudon Park, the municipal parking lot, has approximately 142 parking spots. Catherine Lee Bates, the area by the library and the school, approximately 26 parking spots. And at one time, the town did employ four parking attendants, or meter maids, whatever, you know, preferred to call them. And there were two full-time ones and two part-time ones. Next slide. We've just started looking at new meters. This is only one company. We have, we've had schedules with other companies, they've just canceled, I think, just because of times, probably around the holidays here, they haven't been able to come in. So the numbers that you're going to see and some of the technology you're going to see is only from one company, but we're out looking at others. This is what you'd call a smart meter. Next slide, please. Smart technology, it's wireless, solar, battery-powered, has a variety of payment options, credit cards, coins, you can get vehicle sensors as an option, and you can manage it through the cloud. Next slide. The cost. We have single-head meters and double-head meters. Be one meter that will feed two vehicles, the double-heads. Single, single smart technology is $185 apiece. We have, right now, we currently have 29 of meters, so you see the price up there of On the double-head meters, the cost is 1,00381, and we have 76 of those for a cost of Along with that technology comes, comes some fees. The wireless fee, $5 per meter. So there's 105 meters. You pay $5 if it's a double-head, you pay $5 if it's a single-head, that's why it's 105 meters. So it's $5.25 a month for that. Credit card fee, the word Palm, that happens to be the company that we've been talking to. They get 10 cents every time the credit card is used, the meter company does. If you use coins, they get nothing. The credit card bank fees, they range from 2% to 4%. And I would imagine that's something the town can negotiate with them. Total cost, I can't really tell you because I don't know what the bank fees are going to be, or how many times the meters are going to be used with the credit cards. The Marden Coin ones, the Marden Coin ones are pretty much what we have. It would be brand-new circuit boards, get rid of all the gear ones. And as you can see, the single meter is $173, $29, $5,000. The double ones, 312, it's 76. So for grand total of 28, $729. However, you don't have the smart technology to be able to use the credit cards coin only. So that is something that the town manager and I have, we saw the demonstration on the other one. With the smart meters, they can be managed from the police station. We know when they're broken, you can log in and see them on the computer. You can change the fees by click of the mouse. You can put messages on there. So they're really, they're really smart. The number of metered spaces in town, Woods Hole, has 123, 48 doubles, 27 singles. The steamship authority lot has 18 single meters, it's 18 spaces, and I know you're aware that we're probably going to be losing those to the construction. Robbins Road, 20 meters, and they are all doubles. And Falmouth Heights has 38 spaces, 18 doubles, two single meters. So we have 123 meters and 199 spaces that are monitored by meters. Clinton Ave, the very end of Clinton Ave, down by the end, there are nine parking spaces down there. Currently, they are monitored by our offices when they have time, and there is a sign that allows for four-hour parking there. I can tell you, most of the time, people are there all day. They've either gone to the island. One of the things that we, the manager and I have talked about is possibly putting some meters there going forward in the future, so that we can monitor and manage it better so that there's turnover. And that is really the reason for meters, is so that you have turnover. The next, we're just, these are the Falmouth, as you can see, Falmouth Traffic Rules and Regulation Orders. The last time it was updated was May 19th, 2003. If you could keep going, Peter, it's basically go, I just gave you the whole Section 5, which has to do with parking. Keep going to the next one. That highlighted spot, you're going to see on the next slide, it's, go to the next slide, please. That's what the highlighted spot says. Most people thought, most people think that the town, I thought the town had basically two-hour parking, but as you can see from the rules and regulations, what it says, "No person shall park a vehicle for a period longer than one hour between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on any street, or any period longer than two hours in a municipal off-street parking lot." So Main Street parking is one hour. Other than, other than areas that are designated by meters or signs, are one-hour parking. Where it talks about the Schedule A-1, I've been asked questions, what is that? That, I apologize, I didn't give you a slide. Did some investigating on that, and when the Traffic Advisory Committee put this together, there is a section that is called the Schedule 1A. called the Schedule 1A. And what that is and what they had hoped to accomplish was that the GIS system was going to be able to, all it really is is a chart which designates the location, that says side and to and from. And they had hoped to use GIS to designate the Woods Hole area where the meters are as two parking, the municipal parking lot as two, Main Street as one. I believe because of funding, they never got around to it, nobody ever filled in the charts. But that's what the Schedule 1A is. One thing that we, let me continue with this, if you go to the next slide. Go to the next one, it's just more of that Section 5. Go to the next one. Next. I had a meeting the other day with the, some of the business people from Woods Hole and from the Chamber. And that was, Mike is here. Mike Kisparian and I had talked prior to the meeting and I just wanted to let him know what I would be presenting and then I wanted to go hear what the business community had to say about the enforcement of parking in those, those areas of town. Main Street hasn't really been enforced since we probably removed the meters. And that goes back to when, whenever the renovation was, whatever year that was.
Mid-'90s.
Mid-'90s, yes. When the meters came out. In fact, we did keep on the meter people afterwards. And then just they, just kinda when they retired, we stopped having meter people. The meeting we had the other day, and a lot of them were shocked about the one hour. And we're kinda happy that we weren't enforcing the one hour. And I really don't blame them. Meeting we had the other day, I thought went very well. And we talked about managing Main Street, the parking spots. They need to be managed so that there's turnover. Because currently, there is parking issues on Main Street. You know, you've all heard them, we've heard them for years, I heard them when I started, we'll probably hear them in 10 years from now, too. One suggestion that I had for that and a suggestion that I have for the board tonight is that the, that section in the rules and regs with the one-hour parking is that the one hour will be changed to two hours. And that goes, the reason I'm picking the two hours is that's consistent in what we do with meters. So you're not sending mixed messages depending on where you park. It's consistent throughout the town. The rest of the, the rest of the town, I guess, would be one hour unless you designate the whole town two hours. But Main Street, where the businesses are and things like that, I'd be recommending two hours. In a way, I suggested that we could enforce the parking so that we get turnover and manage it properly is through some technology. And again, this is only one company. There are other companies and we're gonna be researching this over the winter. Is, as you see here, this is called iChalk. It's one of many companies. And instead of walking around chalking tires, now you just walk around and you enter the data into the iChalk. And there's a time, as you can see in that bottom one, there's a clock. So you can set what time you walk by the car. If you're giving them two hours, you can set it for two hours and whatever space number it is and you walk away. Two hours, two hours and 10 minutes, whenever you get back there again, if the vehicle is there, if the vehicle is gone, there's a delete button on it. You hit delete, goes away and that's the end of that. If the vehicle's still there, it's in violation, you hit, there's a ticket button and it prints the ticket. And put the ticket on the car and you move on. One of the suggestions was if we were to do this, and I'm not gonna speak for Michael, but I mean, most of the people that were there thought it was a good idea. And we thought, Tocso talked about a soft rollout if we did it, meaning we would advertise it. I'd put our signboards down there. And for whatever period that we decide on, some courtesy tickets informing people that the town has a two-hour parking and that, you know, we are gonna be enforcing it on whatever date we decide we wanna start the enforcement process on it. But what would really work well is that there would be turnover. Instead of people parking there all day, going to the island or whatever they do when they park on Main Street all day. Let me just give you some more statistics. Oh, the next page, the handheld, and again, one company, we got, we're still doing some research. If we were to buy two of them, it's about $8,000, it's $8,100. The reoccurring fare costs of the Verizon data plans, if we go with Verizon, we, the town pretty much uses Verizon, so that's why we picked that, two years, you know, $5.98. And then the licensing fees, of course, the $4.77. Six. Next, please. Currently, right now, all our parking tickets, the orange tickets, the handwritten tickets that you see, once they're written and they come to the police station, they're sent over here at the town hall. And tax, tax office are the ones who enter the tickets. Just, I wanted to give you some data on that, too. I mean, we spoke with the woman that does it. Takes her 15 to 22 hours on an average week entering tickets, printing bills, stuffing envelopes, and making entries into the registry for non-renewals. Two to three days, entering just tickets depending on the volume. This time of year, of course, is gonna be a little slow. But in the summertime, it's, she's very, very busy. So entering parking tickets takes up a lot of her day and takes her, takes her away from other duties that she could be doing in the tax office. Where if you back up to the, the, one more, thank you. This all gets put in automatically, goes to the registry, goes to a company, which we'll be managing. There are fees, of course, but it's done. It also tracks, if the officer enters in, enters in your plate and you have six or seven or 10 outstanding tickets, we can tow your vehicle and impound your vehicle. So that information is right there for him to take that action and free up an employee here in town hall to do other things that need to be done. Go ahead. One more. Parking Control Representative, as you can see, it's a grade four. The definition, enforce all parking rules, regulations, specific locations within the town and all other related required work. Monitor parking meters, issue parking tickets for meters and other motor vehicle parking violations, patrol the assigned areas, assist parking meter mechanic on the collection of monies. And some of this comes from when we had people on Main Street. Provide assistance, it's still, it happens to still be in the, in the regulations for the meter person, is provide assistance for the schoolchildren, the buses, they cross the street. When they, when they were on Main Street, that's what they helped out with the Mullen Hall School. Check sidewalks for obstructions, provide assistance to pedestrians, basically be an advocate for the town. Next slide. Parking Control Salary, 14, they start out at $14.92, 40 hours a week, as you can see, $5.96 weekly. Yearly salary, $31,000. And the reason I gave you that information, back up one, the reason I gave you that information, if we move on to controlling Main Street and other parts of town, currently, we, we have only one parking, I could told you, we had four at one time, two full-time, two part-time. There are seven days in a week. Currently, right now, the parking attendant that, if we have a parking attendant, only works five days a week. There's two days a week that aren't covered, that we have to try to cover with our patrol officers in their area. You heard the stats on the calls for services and things like that. We just don't always get to it. So if we're gonna initiate a program to manage parking, cannot depend on the uniform offices to manage that parking. So we would be looking at either hiring another parking attendant or at least a part-time parking attendant to fill in for those, at least two days a week so that we have full coverage throughout the town. So that's why I wanted to give you those numbers. And that's something that the manager and I would be looking at. Next slide, please. Parking Ticket Revenues, I figured, you know, I'm gonna give you the whole picture here. For FY '16, '15, and '14, as you can see, these are the parking ticket revenues, $302,000 in revenues. Next slide. Unpaid parking tickets, still outstanding, $46,000. These are the tickets that if you went to the register to register your car and you haven't paid them, then you're not gonna register your car because the register will send you here to pay your parking ticket. And that's the other nice thing about the iChalk and some of the other companies, you can pay online. You can also dispute it online if you want to. Take a picture, send the picture in, say, you know, if you were a foot away, say you got a violation of being a foot away from the curb, you can take a picture yourself. However, the officer can take a picture and send it in, too. So it would be, but those are some of the things you could do with the new technology. But currently, right now, there's $46,000 outstanding. The meter revenues, the Falmouth Heights, Steamship Authority, and Woods Hole for FY ' '16, because we're not quite through, $107,000 so far. FY '15 was $170. FY '14, $174.
Just on the fiscal year dates, remember, we always go July to June. And so that's the reason why the fiscal year 2016 is July to November. It will be another July to June.
There will be another, yes.
And so the numbers are very comparable.
Right. Yeah, it's, so if you wanna say you're on track, it's on track, I guess, for the same problem. So, like I said, it was a, I thought, I felt it was a very positive meeting with the business community. Some of the suggestions that they had, and I told them that I would bring them to you, was the municipal lot. We really weren't looking to do a whole lot with the municipal lot right at the moment. We're just pretty much looking to deal with the Main Street parking spaces and all that, Catherine Lee Bates, Shore Street Extension and all those. But one of the suggestions or one of the questions that came up was possibly having engineering department look at the municipal lot to see if we're getting all the parking spaces that we can out of that. Because some of the complaints that go on with that, there aren't enough parking spots. And then the other piece is a lot of the long-term parking in the municipal lot. And several people spoke about cars being there for a week or two in the parking lot. So, but I mean, we could address whatever, you know, the board feels needs to be addressed. But my reason for coming here tonight was pretty much to deal with the municipal, deal with the Main Street parking and give you an idea about the meter systems. And as I said, as a recommendation, I'd be recommending that the board really look at the one-hour parking and change that to two hours.
Ms. Ryan?
A quick question, which maybe Mr. Kisparian might wanna weigh in on as well. And we also got an email, I was thinking the same thing. But in terms of visitors to Main Street, if you wanna have a meal, could be an hour and a half, depending on how busy the restaurant is, you might have to wait, could be as much as two hours. And if it's a two-hour limit, it doesn't really give you that opportunity to visit a couple of shops. So I'm wondering what the business community thought about having, you know, and I certainly think, but you know, you can't have people parking all day and certainly not overnight. But the suggestion was, why not four hours? You don't have to use it, but at least you're not giving a ticket and you also have the opportunity not only to visit a restaurant, but also a couple of businesses.
That, that was spoken, I mean, during the meeting, and I'll let Michael speak, too, on that. And some of the, some of the people had thought maybe three hours, but there were other people that, and they were people that had restaurants, that thought three hours was too long. You have to remember, too, the parking would be from, the regulated two-hour parking would be from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., similar to what we do with the meters. If you parked there at 4:00 in the afternoon, just for example, you park at 4:00 in the afternoon, you get from 4:00 to 6:00. And then after that, you can stay there. So if you were doing some shopping or whatever and, I don't know if people are having, I don't know, I don't have three-hour lunches, but dinner might be a little longer. And at the dinner hour and everything else, you would have that extra time.
I felt the same way, because I, I don't imagine a three-hour lunch, but I do imagine someone doing a little shopping first and being in the restaurant and the two hours is coming up and has to be on their mind. And I think the worst thing we can do for Falmouth is they have a wonderful dinner and they come out and there's that ticket. And, and that's why I would be, I would be more inclined to a little bit longer than two. I'm not sure I'd go as far as four, but three, I'd be very happy with.
I was gonna say, I parked on Main Street Hyannis the other day. And they have, it's just two hours, limit two hours, period. Doesn't say eight, four, whatever, it's just a two-hour limit.
Right.
Now, and then it's up to you to monitor, which I did, monitor my own time, even though there's, there are no meters, but you never know who's gonna come down and check.
And that's what we'd have to do, is again, put some signage up to advise people. I mean, we do an educational piece. Other places that I've gone, it's pretty much what it is, it's either one hour or two hours. Again, if Michael wants to say anything, I mean, invite him up, because he was at the meeting and he speaks for the business community.
We've got, got questions here in the know. Sam?
Yeah, I, I was in Lake Placid, New York this summer. And their Main Street, they have boxes where you actually go pay for your parking.
The banks, yes.
Banks, essentially. And then you carry the slip back and put it in the dashboard of your car. And that means you don't have to worry about the chalking, but anybody that walks along can see whether you've exceeded the time limit or not. And, and that sort of enforces a time limit.
Right. And I know there was a, I believe there was a committee back in the fall, was it, that was looking at revenue?
Year and a half ago, yeah.
Year and a half ago, it was. Okay, just, time just flies. And I know they, they looked at those options, because I think they were comparing them, something with Plymouth and some other agencies like that. But again, I think some of the community thought that the, you know, putting meters back on Main Street, they didn't like that idea after the renovation. And I don't blame them, it looks nice and everything else. The banks, I don't know how many banks you would actually need on Main Street. Again, you'd have to still put some signage up and things like that, so. And it didn't seem to be a popular, from what I recall, didn't seem to be too popular. So that's why we started looking, when I went to the International Cheese Conference here last month, of course, they have everything in the world in the convention center, and I started looking at some of the parking management systems. And that's where I saw the iChalk and some of the others. And that's why I just thought that would be basically a compromise. I mean, again, if the board wished to go forward with banks or something like that, I mean, that's up to you.
I was in Province Town not long ago, and they have a parking lot. It's not fenced in, but when you enter it, there's a kiosk. And they, all the parking spaces are numbered.
Correct.
And you go in the kiosk and you choose whichever parking space you're gonna park in and how long you're gonna be. And then you pay in advance.
Pay in advance.
And then you take the slip and put it on your dashboard. We don't have controlled parking lots, though, where that would really work.
No, I mean, you, you could do something like that in the municipal lot if you, if you, because you only have two ways, basically, you only have a couple ways in, a couple ways out. So you could put banks in the municipal lot. And you could put them on Main Street, as, as Sam had said. It just depends on which way do you wanna go and how do you want it enforced.
It seems to me that the, the most logical and the simplest way and the more controllable way would be to have some type of a mechanical or computerized system that people could use, pay, and that's it. And then the town would have all the records rather than have people trying to juggle parking regulations. Somehow it could be done by computer mechanically in some other way.
And a major difference when they, we were looking at this a year and a half ago, was as a revenue producer.
Right.
And I think that's the reason it was dismissed. This idea is not coming forward as a revenue producer as much as a parking management plan.
Correct.
As to how do we get the cars off of the street part of it out of the long term. And some of the cars are employee cars for the businesses, some of them are cars that are owned by some of the business owners and just prefer that parking spot to say, now we want these spots for the people who are going to be coming and doing businesses. And that's the reason why I'm going.
And that was mentioned at the meeting. And again, I'm presenting it as a management tool to manage Main Street's parking.
Any other questions for the chief before we see if there are people in the audience?
Just, just one more. When we were talking about that chalk marking and he had that piece of equipment, do they receive a ticket or a notice after two hours or?
Yes, you can, you can write a ticket. That, that machine also writes tickets. It does two-fold things. You can buy electronic ticket writing machines. And when, one of the other pieces that we have to start thinking about, Valerie's here, is that currently, those tickets are entered through a program called Top Gun. And that's going away. So the town's gonna have to look at either purchasing some sort of software program to manage the tickets in the town of Falmouth. Or all those tickets for the revenue that you saw there, they won't get entered in and they won't get entered into the register. So you're gonna have to, gonna have to really start thinking about that also. Where if you went with an electronic system like this, it gets downloaded and entered in and another company manages it for you.
And just for the sake of our discussion, I mean, I'm gonna break our discussion probably into four different topics. Right now, we're just discussing Main Street. We then have two or three other meter questions to talk about, but I think we'll probably break that into at that point. Okay, any other questions for the chief before we open up to the public, to Ryan?
in, and another company manages it for you.
And just for the sake of our discussion, I mean, I'm going to break our discussion probably into four different topics. Right now, we're just discussing Main Street. We then have two or three other meter questions to talk about, but I think we'll probably break that into at that point. Okay, any other questions for the chief before we open up to the public, to Ryan?
Oh, yeah, I do have one. Like, what about backup? I mean, if we use a computerized system like that, it's obviously backed up somewhere. Does the town have to provide the backup, or is it done through the company? Or I guess it depends on how you, how.
If you, again, we're in the researching stages here with things like that. My guess is it would be all managed through the companies, and these are companies that do big cities and everything else.
You want to just make sure that it's part of the requirement at this point you put out for the system.
Mr. Casperian, would you like to?
Thank you.
Yeah, Jess, please.
Please, microphone.
For the mic.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Casperian, I'm president of Falmouth Chamber. So not to be redundant, because the chief did cover quite a bit. We did invite the business community to come in. Mr. Suso was kind enough to let me know that this was going to be discussed tonight. We had about twenty-five members of the business community representing primarily Main Street and Woods Hole. So I know the issue right now, we're talking about is Main Street. I think the first issue that came up that everyone seemed to agree on was that the one hour had to be moved up to more than one hour. And there was disagreement about the amount of time. And I think that had to do with the type of business somebody was running. Some of the restaurateurs felt as though it should be longer, as you had alluded to, three hours, et cetera. And then, of course, we spoke a little bit about the timing, and the chief had clarified that after six o'clock it would be for as long as they wanted. Other people who own businesses where people would run in and out were a little concerned about people parking for three hours. What if somebody was coming in for a loaf of bread, or a ice cream, or something like that? So I think that that really needs to be addressed, and everybody needs to have an opportunity to weigh in on that, coming up with an hour. Everyone understands one hour isn't enough time. I think there are varying opinions on that. Well, I think the overall opinion was that the people were pleased with the chief's willingness to start off with a warning-type system. Even had mentioned putting the signs, the visual signs up on either side of Main Street, particularly to let the residents of Falmouth know that this is coming, because we don't want residents to be ticketed. Certainly, the chamber doesn't want visitors who are coming here in the summertime to be ticketed, have a bad experience, and say, we're never going back to that town. Again, I think also overwhelmingly, the opinion was not to put meters back on Main Street. Not only aesthetically, but because the people have to come up with the money, but somehow to put up signs saying this is what the limit of the parking is, and to have an iChalk or similar system come through, and maybe for a period of time, particularly when it's not so busy with residents, to give warnings out as well and to allow that. So I think the real issue is going to be probably hearing more, and I would urge the board to hear more from the specific businesses, perhaps give them a little bit more time to allow specific businesses to come in and really get a handle on the amount of time. I think what the chief had mentioned about uniform across the town being two hours makes sense, however, that particular area, because it's so busy and it does serve so many businesses, it may be an opportunity there to expand it at specific hours, to give some of the businesses to have patrons who are staying longer, an opportunity to park longer, but also, you know, some spots for people who are going to be running in and out. The overwhelming complaint we got from business owners was that the people who were probably offending it most were employees of other businesses. And I think that's really what the business owners who attended this meeting wanted to make clear. They wanted those spots to be open to residents and patrons of their businesses. And of course, the whole issue came up of, where do my employees park? And again, I know you want to just talk about Main Street, but there are a lot of things we have to look at. I think this is a multifaceted problem, it's a big problem. You know, the town has grown to a point, we really do need to look at that municipal lot. Somebody else, from the Village Association also mentioned, long-term, perhaps shuttle buses and places for employees to park. Again, I know that's not what you want to talk about right here, but.
It's still, it's certainly related. I just was saying, I didn't want to talk about the whole picture with the meters and what's all in the meters and that.
Right. But overwhelmingly, yes, the time should be increased. To be determined, I think you have to listen to more people. We have to take the time to really listen to what people say, and that meters are not a good idea, like something like an iChalk or similar type of situation.
Now, I just wanted to mention something that might appeal to you, because I think there are a lot of options. But I heard a couple of years ago, we're possible down by the waterfront, not a steamship lot, but a lot for business people, commercial, you know, painters, contractors, people who park their vehicles and then take the boat to the island, where they could charge it. There was some way to charge your parking. And if you got stuck, say, on the island, you couldn't get back, you could call on your cellphone and up the hours on the parking meter and also pay for it by cellphone. So I mean, there's, I think there's a lot of options out there that, for business people on Main Street, if they thought they had customers that, oh, my parking's going to run out, they could just, from their cellphone.
Right.
Increase the parking and pay for it from the restaurant, something like that.
The downside to that is then you're going to have the, I mean, employees taking advantage of that. One thing I know New Bedford does is, they have, if you get a ticket and then can show a receipt for spending money at a restaurant or a store, you can actually get away from the ticket because you verified that you did some business in town.
Sure.
And so sort of way, an informal way of getting it validated, of that kind of a thing. One of the things I know we've talked about, if we're going to do this, is to increase the signage, getting people to the, during the summer, to the Mullen Hall lots and the Lawrence School lots, and at least advertising more and more. There are other places you can park, that we have two-hour parking, we are parking on Main Street, but we have the municipal lots, whether it's here, whether it's Pegg Noonan, whether it's Mullen Hall, Lawrence, and those ones are a little bit more off-site. And maybe do a little bit of publicizing, that they can also park at the Steamship Lot on Palmer Ave and pay for it there, but then know that they have that time to take a bus down to Woods Hole, come into Falmouth and use that lot too.
Yeah, I mean, I think the most important thing is to really hear from the community, residents as well as business owners, you know, certainly, the summertime is when it becomes very, very challenging and very difficult, but there are a lot of stakeholders involved. And I think it's really important for everybody to weigh in and come up with a solution that's going to be fair and reasonable for everybody involved. But particularly, to keep in mind that the business owners on Main Street can't make money unless they have, you know, customers, and try to find a fair way that's going to appeal to all different types of businesses that are there.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak, particularly if there are any business owners who want to continue to add to the dialogue?
Dan Scherer. I was on that committee, and we did do a quite large study, which I'm sure Jennifer has all the things, but there are a lot of agencies that will do all this work for you, rent you, or even put the, what, parking meters in free of charge, if that's what you want. Of course, you would not make the money, they would. But what the ones you rent, you do make money of them, and I think that should be looked into.
Thank you. Mr. Dufray?
Is the subject matter restricted just on the Main Street?
At this time, but we'll be coming back to the meters, both on the Heights, Woods Hole, and on Clinton Ave.
I'd like to speak on the Heights meters.
Okay, Phil, I think we're going to try to move on this one, and that'll be the next issue that we'll chat about.
Lee Geisiger with the Falmouth Village Association, and I just want to echo what Michael said, there were actually quite a few of us at that meeting, and there's actually quite a few of us here tonight. The businesses want to be heard, and we're properly representing the Village Association, but the meter discussion, the municipal parking lot, the employee suggestion, Mullen Hall, Lawrence, have employees park there, there's all sorts of things that we can, we can chime in on, and if we can be heard, it'd be greatly appreciated.
This is the start, we'd love to, I mean, that's why I'm asking, please come forward and talk to us.
So again, three hours was kind of, is kind of the universal. When we first heard about this, we were unaware that overnight parking wasn't allowed. We thought that it wasn't allowed, so that was an issue for some of the restaurants and so forth, the fact that it stops at six o'clock. The chief did a great job of clarifying for us a couple of weeks ago. The municipal parking lot and the other parking lots need to be reassessed. I'm actually the one that raised the issue that Chief Dunn made mention of. If it's engineering, there could be a good forty or fifty spaces added to some of these lots. And who parks there, and employee parking is an issue, the businesses need to step up and be part of that. And I don't know if there's anyone else who wants to?
Yep, Ms. McGuire.
Hi there. I'm Deb McGuire, I own Lady Maguire's Irish Pub. I, I'm concerned about, my concern is where are the employees going to park? And so are we just strictly talking about Main Street, or are we talking about Main Street and the municipal lot?
Municipal lots also, I'm just saying, we're talking about Main Street area.
Main Street area, because, I mean, my cooks can't, in the middle of cooking, run out and move a car. And that's, and my servers can't also. I mean, I think the logistics of it, that we really need to think through, where are employees going to park? I have fifty-four employees in the summer, they all have cars, except for two or three that are under sixteen. As a citizen, I use Mike Adams as a dentist, and I, as I've gotten older, I've gotten stuck in that chair many times for longer than two hours, having dental work done. And I have to say, I'd be mad as a hornet if I came out and there was a parking ticket on my car. And the same going to the beauty salon. I mean, services take longer than two hours, so I do think we need to look at another solution other than two hours. So I appreciate your input.
So give us a number.
I think, three, three. I mean, and I'll say, even though there's lots of people who have two-hour lunches in the summer, and if there's a half an hour wait for a table, it takes nine, in the restaurant industry, you figure you work on a ninety-minute turnover with seating. So if you add in a thirty-minute wait, which is very common in the summer, right there, you write it two hours, I wouldn't, and you just said what you experienced in Hyannis. That's not fun. And it's not an issue of, I don't know, down in Hyannis, I mean, in other places, yes, you go and feed the meter, and I know you're not supposed to feed the meters, but this is actually, you have to go and physically move your car, which is not an easy thing to do.
And how would you see your employees would handle with the three-hour?
Well, I, well, I, we got to look at that. If, I mean, this fifty-four businesses on Main Street in the Village Association, so there's got to be two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty employee, employees on Main Street. Where are they going to park? Are we including Town Hall Square also, I was curious?
That's not in the number, that Chief Dunn just gave us.
Okay, so everybody can park down here.
Two-one o'clock, approximately.
Well, that's okay.
There's no overnight parking in this lot there. And actually, there's no overnight parking on Main Street either, we just don't enforce that, and I don't think we have any intention to force it. One reason is that there are some people who shouldn't be driving after they're leaving places, and we don't want to put it on the establishment and say, nope, I just want to remind you, you got to get your car out of there, don't want that.
Right, you know what, and they have to pay a ticket because they parked overnight, because they were being sensible. Small price to pay for parking.
Well, actually, there was a woman who came in today looking for her car. And she had parked it out here yesterday, and obviously went to the vineyard, and came back, and the car was gone. It was towed, which is what happens if they leave their car overnight, so it does happen.
Deb, what do your employees do right now?
They park in the municipal lot. We used to have, with the Village Association, we always had a sign that said, leave Main Street for the customers. And I think we just need to restart circulating that and reminding our employees, do not park on Main Street. Although, in the dead of winter, we do like them to park on Main Street, so it makes Main Street a little more active, because you can.
But in the evenings, they can still do that, which is really when you want it to look like it's actually not as sleepy town as it can look.
I mean, I'm a little worried about them parking at Mullen, and my staff, I mean, they get out at ten-thirty and one a.m. in the morning. We've watched them walk to the municipal lot, or escort them, someone escorts them. So, you know, we have to figure out that to safety of people going to lots far away from places.
Is there, Mr. Dufray? Again, you should, if you go to the podium, and I am going to ask that you address me, and I will then address her, just.
I had had conversations with that McGuire, on, Adrian Dufray, by the way, precinct two, incapacitated customers, and did you touch on that issue?
Yes, we said they were going to take a ticket. Oh, excuse me?
It is something that I just asked her, that we've not, we're not going to, even if they do get a ticket, we're going to make sure that we're taking care of them and not put them, the owners either on the business.
But is there some system that could be devised where the owners of the establishments who probably would drive the people home would have some way of marking the automobile?
Right now, we're not even planning on enforcing overnight parking regulations. It is.
My concern of incapacitated drivers.
Right, we don't want people driving because they don't want the ticket.
And our plan is not right now to enforce the overnight parking regulation. Any other from the businesses? And I do understand Mr. Casperian's hoping that we're going to get more input in there.
Patricia Cosgrove, manager, Falmouth Village Association, thank you for your time. I had a concern about the actual, maybe the months or the season that this would come into effect. Are we talking about all year? Are we talking about the heavier months in the season, you know, Memorial Day to Labor Day? And if so, maybe you need to think about how we can adjust the time then. So May to September, maybe it's three hours. And maybe Friday, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, maybe it's four hours during the day. And also, does this pertain to events? Because when there is a day-long event on Main Street, would that pertain to those people parking for the entire day? So those are just some of the questions I had in the back of my mind. If we had thought about the restrictions on the timeframe, the months of the season, and whether special events are, special events are involved.
Certainly, I had thought about that. I was trying to be as consistent as possible, which is one of the reasons why I was moving to three hours. I didn't want it to appear that the only people we're trying to ticket or control are summer people, but say, nope, this is a general policy that we believe in. I was originally thinking it would be all the time, it would be twelve months of the year. The special events, I guess, if you're here for the special event, you park in the municipal lot. If you're here for regular business, that's what the street is for. And, you know, the only special event that's really different than that is the street fair, and you can't park there anyway. I'm not sure, and during the summer, we don't have any other special events now in Main Street area, per our policy that we've set up, trying to get them off of the Main Street area because of exactly these issues.
Well, there are some parades and, you know, some smaller events that do take from start to finish more than two hours, so I'm just considering.
The reason why we thought the three hours might, give me, I mean, again, so we are wearing everything, what event are you thinking of that this would affect?
Well, like the July Fourth Parade, the bike parade, you know, that, those families are on the street for quite a while, between the bikes and then the playground and then lunch, and it could very well be over three hours. I just thought we could consider the fact that there are some occasions where families come for maybe a two-hour event, but will make a day of it.
Yeah, I think the model we have set for, at least in Woods Hole right now, is when there are special events, that they want to encourage that, that the Woods Hole Village Business Association asks for a forgiveness of enforcement at that time. And so the Village Association could follow that model, also say, oh, we have this special event going on, can we be a little more lenient about it for this day? And I think that's something that certainly could be considered.
Okay. And when we're talking about municipal lots, could you clarify what those are in conjunction with Main Street? Is it Pegg Noonan Park specifically, that area back there, or is it the municipal lots behind Main Street businesses? Is that considered all part of this municipal lot?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify, we're only talking about on-street parking tonight. Right, but the effect it has on municipal, we're not going to change the regulations on municipal lots.
On municipal, okay. But where do we, where do these people go to park over the two-hour limit or the three-hour limit?
I think the suggestion would be they're behind the Eastman's Block.
Okay, all back there, behind the businesses.
I know that a bunch of those places behind here are restricted to the, are actually our tenants' spots, or at least posted that way. I'm not sure whether that is within, because I do believe that actually is town property. As to why, on this side, they can say these are spots reserved for either employees or people visiting the places.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other input from the public? Would the board like to take any action tonight on the Main Street hours?
Mr. Chairman, could I send a copy of those down just for the board?
I think this is the beginning of a process, so I don't think we're ready to take any action. I think we need to do a little bit more outreach and look at all the options that might be available and all the technology that might be available.
Well.
Ms. Catherine, please?
Well, I would agree, but I also think it would be very simple to just change the Main Street hours to two hours. the Main Street hours to two hours. I mean, that wouldn't take a whole lot of, and I don't know. It just seems, what do we have here? A potential motion from, from the town manager that could be a two-hour on-street parking limit.
Mm-hmm.
And if there were, well, I haven't read it all. But I mean, I think that's an option of something we could do tonight. And then, I don't see us doing anything else but taking it under advisement and really thinking about all of it, because there are so many options available to manage parking that, I mean, I even read a story, if you can believe this, where they had, they had the curb painted with the length of a parking space, and if it was painted blue, you could park for two hours. If it was painted red, you couldn't park at all. If it was painted yellow, you had a half an hour. Who in the world could ever remember those color coding of curbs? So it's really kind of wild. So I think if we, I think it would be a good thing if we increased the parking on Main Street from one to two hours, and then take the rest under advisement, but not for a very long time, and plan what our next steps are gonna be.
Ms. Flynn?
I, I agree with Mr. Patterson. What, what we effectively have right now is unlimited parking. And to minimize that into two hours, I think that it would be very, very difficult. I think this is just the first step. And in fact, the chamber president mentioned that there has to be a lot more outreach. And I, you know, also the restaurant owners, I, I think that the chair made also a good point in that this, right here, is an opportunity to be heard. And maybe the Village Association, the Business Association, as well as the Woods Hole Business Association, or businesses in general, can publicize the fact along with the selectmen that we are asking for input. I mean, it's, it's really a, a multi-step issue. There could be signs that direct people that want four hours to go to certain lots, and then maybe two hours would make sense. But, but again, I, you know, my family, five kids, one week a year, you go, you know, it takes two hours to get to the restaurant, and then you can't shop or go to the playground. You know, it's, it's really a, a big part of, of certainly the summer visitors and, and, you know, more year-round as things go. So I, I'd be in favor of, of, you know, hearing this further after some more outreach.
Ms. Boston?
I think if we look at these potential motions that were just given to us, I think one that we definitely should think about is the fourth bullet.
Okay, we're only talking about the first.
Okay. Then, I think on the first one, we could do that. You're gonna do each one of these motions?
I'm gonna, there, that, our discussion is on each one separately, so.
Okay.
My word on this is I would be inclined, and I feel that we could move forward on it, and I would be inclined to, and maybe just to let the public know, that I would be inclined to switch our one-hour regulation, which is what we have right now.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, that could be enforced on tomorrow. And I'm not suggesting that, but that's actually what the regulation is. It isn't unlimited. The regulation is one hour right now. And I would be inclined to, so we can move forward, that I would be voting the next time we vote on a three-hour time limit on Main Street. And leave it up to the chief to figure out his enforcement strategy. I don't think that's something for us to decide, that he's gonna come up with what he finds is the best recommendation, whether it's the eye chalk, whether he says actually the banks are better, whether, I mean, I don't think meters is where we're gonna go, but whether he goes to old-fashioned chalk. But I think that's something that doesn't need to be discussed by us, but that could be something that the town manager and the chief can determine is the best method.
Did you say three?
So your point is to have a motion from the one hour to the two hour?
You said three.
I'm, I'm much more interested in the three hour than the two hour.
All right.
But I'm not putting that forward as a motion. I'm just saying that would be my inclination. But I also want to respect that Mr. Patterson would like to get more input, as Mr. Casperian has suggested, and other people are interested in two hours. So I'm just, Ms. Flynn?
Well, I, I would say, don't do anything, because there's no signage. And so if you don't have a way to put signs up to let people know that there is a limit, then it's, that's not good either.
Well, certainly...
So it would be better not to do anything, just to keep the status quo, which is really no enforcement on Main Street, basically, would you say, or?
My attention would be to three hours and then...
By all rights, we should be enforcing them.
Right.
It's a law that you or the traffic advisory put on the books. And we're not enforcing it only because of manpower. If we had meter people, or I had parking attendants to walk Main Street to monitor the fire hydrants, the crosswalks, the handicaps and all those, then the one hour probably would be enforced. It's on the books.
It's on the books, but there's no signage to let people know what the requirements are.
Right. And the way I would suggest that the chief implement this is that we switch it to three hours and have a gradual phasing as to when it actually starts being enforced.
We have to hire people.
Yep.
Have to hire, I don't know, do you, through, through the chairman, do you look at this, looking at the very first one, do you look at this, that there could be signage before all of this would happen in the spring?
That would absolutely be our intention, if you just...
Yes, that the signage would be there, and it would be in the spring.
If the board wants to give us direction, we'll put that in motion, and working with the chief, we'll transition it appropriately.
And that's what I had told the business community the other day. It would be pretty much a soft rollout. I'll even put our electronic signs out on Main Street, you know, advising. Yes, we're gonna have to get signs put up on Main Street that fit into the Main Street area, of course, you know. And then, for a period of time, courtesy tickets with information on it. When I say, mostly a courtesy card, that would say you're in violation, however, the rules and reg, and print the rules and regulations on there, that it's two hour, three hour, two hours and fifteen minutes, whatever you decide. And put it on there and let them know over time. And then on a particular date, whatever that date is, then we start enforcing it. So it would be soft, a soft rollout. We need to educate people first.
Ms. Ram?
The timing of this, I think, is perfect to give a short amount of time for additional input. So I just want to reiterate that.
And how much time do you think that would should be? Two weeks or January?
Not till spring. I think we have to give the business community time to organize the, you know, the effort to let people know this is a subject to be looked at. The, it can be, you know, obviously it'll be in the enterprise. So I think two weeks to, you know, pull some input together, and then maybe we look at it in a month.
Okay, so our first meeting in, in January is what you're advising me, that we put this under advisement until then?
That, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
I agree. All right. Thank you. Next, we did have, we have some parking meter discussions, and I'll start off with the first question, because I know Mr. DeFrain is here and wanted to chat about this. On the parking meters that are at the Falmouth Heights area on the ballpark, can those easily be removed and put back in in the summer? Or, I know that sometimes we did that. Can you at least go in?
We, again, you have to go back into the history. We currently remove the meters on Robin's Road because there are no businesses on Robin's Road. And for the meters to sit there and take abuse through the winter, it makes no sense, so they were removed. Going back in the history, when the casino and the Brothers Four closed up and you rolled the sidewalks up on the heights, the meters were removed. So can they be taken out? They could be taken out, they could be bagged, it's whatever.
And the, is it, is the Heights area continued during the winter to be a parking problem?
Parking problem?
I mean, if these are parking controlled...
We still, we still have issues around the ball field because of the, of the basketball court and things like that. And, again, the beaches aren't full, so that lot's always open now, so.
But it's not, I mean, if the meters are there maybe to create turnover, as opposed to creating rent review.
Correct.
There are parking spaces.
There are parking spaces elsewhere that they could park.
Okay. All right. Mr. DeFrain?
On the Heights areas?
Yep.
Adrian DeFrain, resident of precinct two, and I've lived in Falmouth Heights for some sixty-odd years. Falmouth Heights Ball Field, which is a park donated by I forget what family, that park extends all the way to the street. Parking meters were put there years ago as some form of controlled parking in the summertime to help the businesses have a place to do business. These businesses now are special permitted businesses that have their own parking facilities. It's the only ball field in the town of Falmouth that has parking meters. And for years, the parking meters were removed so that the kids could go slide, so the kids could go play ball, so the kids could play basketball. It's a family-oriented park. And I take offense that the last two years, the families and the old timers, you know, I'm not an old timer, but I like to go watch them, the parking meters are still in effect. And I don't know who initiated that proposal. But again, I'm gonna repeat, it's the only ball field in the town of Falmouth, and it's the only park area in the town of Falmouth that has parking meters. And they were put there for a purpose from Memorial Day to Labor Day. There is no use for them beyond that point. We have a beach parking lot that was originally established for beach purposes, which has now become a municipal parking lot. The casino people have their own parking facility, which they never opened, but they should open it. And the British Beer also has a parking facility. So to me, the ball field should be, those meters should be gone right after Labor Day. And I'm asking the board of selectmen here tonight to look at that and say, is this what we want to do to the families that like to come to Falmouth Heights to play balls? Whether it's basketball, volleyball, or whatever. It's a highly utilized recreational area and should not be meters.
Chief Dunn, I have a quick question for you, and this can be a very rough number. But Chief Dunn?
Oh, please.
Thank you, Mr. DeFrain. The revenue that we do get from the Heights during the winter, do you think we would ever notice that in our budget?
Probably not.
Okay. Would anyone be willing to make a motion that we ask that the Falmouth Heights meters be taken out in the same policy as the Robin Roads?
I would, I would question, should they be bagged rather than taken out?
We don't have any bags.
Oh, we don't have any bags.
Unless we actually go and purchase them.
Wouldn't it be less expensive to bag than take them out?
The bags, actually, I think, were, last year when we talked about the Woods Hole ones, they're about...
Talk about the bags in Woods Hole, they, they were made by Catherine Bumper specifically for Woods Hole. So I don't have any...
She's here.
I don't have any, I asked her, she'll make more bags.
No, but my question was, is it more expensive to bag than to remove?
Well, I have to buy the bags.
What?
I have to buy the bags. I don't have any bags.
So it's just labor?
I have enough, I have enough bags for the people in Woods Hole.
But it's just labor to remove them, is that it? See, my question is...
Oh, to remove, remove the meters?
Which is better, to remove them or bag them?
I'd have to have our meter person go up there and remove them.
You're talking nineteen or twenty meters?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm just saying, that they'd have to be, yeah, I have to pay him to go up there and remove them.
Mr. DeFrain?
Yeah, well, you know, we solve that problem very easily.
No, we can't remove them.
I wouldn't do that, you know. Adrian DeFrain, no, you know, if you, years ago, when they removed the meters after the season, it was to maintain them so that they could put it back the next spring. So there's thirty-eight meters, and they get heavy use all summer, right? And we could also get into the new meters that take multiple monies, you know, sophisticated ones.
Foreign currency.
And, you know, so if we're gonna do it, let's do it right, but let's do it for the shorter period of time from Memorial Day until Labor Day.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to remove the meters at Falmouth Heights.
Okay, we have that motion. Ms. Ram?
For the season.
Second, Ms. Moran?
My question was, do you think you could get the Heights Association to make bags like the Woods Hole Association did?
I don't think that's necessary. I really don't think that's necessary. I've been a resident taxpayer in the town of Falmouth since nineteen fifty-three. And I don't think anybody that in, in the town of Falmouth would squawk at whatever the cost is, and it could come out of his budget. We just saw a considerable amount of money taken in on parking meter revenues. And I, I remember, incidentally, I'm gonna throw one out, parking meters on Main Street have never been removed legally, and I think I've talked to every one of you about that. They were never removed legally by town meeting. And only town meeting can remove the parking meters that were put there by town meeting. So anyway, there is money in, in the, in the parking meter funds, I think, to buy bags. There's money there to remove them. The guy has to fix them up and get them ready for the next year. This is the time to do it.
On your meters on Main Street, I've been looking for the regulation, and I think it may have been superseded by the regulations that Chief Dunn referred to in two thousand and three, where that became the new parking regulations. And so that took charge of everything else that had been in place beforehand.
I beg to differ with the chairman. On town meeting floor, I was the spokesman for the finance committee when the Main Street committee removed the meters. And there was a loss of revenue, and I'm gonna use a number that may be arbitrary, forty-three thousand dollars. And from the finance committee's viewpoint, there was an arbitrary loss of money by a committee. And town meeting concurred with the finance committee that only town meeting can remove the parking meters on Main Street. So a study was supposedly conducted by two high school kids on a, on a rainy weekend, but they were never brought back to town meeting.
Okay.
And not that I want the, not, not that I want meters back on Main Street, that's not my issue.
Okay, we have a motion? Ms. Mauplin, motion seventeen?
I'd like a little more explanation on your motion from that.
I think the motion in second is to remove the, the meters that are on Falmouth Heights Road.
On Falmouth Heights Road for the, for the winter season.
Starting?
When Chief Dunn has a chance to get his parking attendant there to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask for, if you, the board might give us as an alternative, either removing or bagging them?
Yeah.
Whichever we determine would be most appropriate.
I agree.
I'll amend my motion to include "or" bagging.
Okay, I agree. All right, a motion in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, thank you.
I'll see you at Liam's.
Mr. Chairman, one other item?
Yeah.
If it would be the board's desire, I would be happy to have town council explore that issue that was just raised.
Thank you.
As to questioning the authority of the board to make decisions on parking meters. And I know Frank is with us here tonight, so happy to do that.
Okay, the next item has been a suggestion of placing parking meters on, the parking spaces on Clinton, Clinton Avenue. This is near the intersection with Scranton Avenue. I think this is right at where the Rob Bar is.
The only concern I have, if we're going to move forward on this whole parking management issue and have something in place by, by spring, then I would say, let's include that in our discussion and not do something now. It might be costly, and we may decide come spring that we don't want to do that there, that we have some other option that we haven't looked at yet. So I would say, put that off until, and include it in our parking management discussions.
I would agree.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the fourth bullet, which is the request of the Woods Hole community, I think this one, the community association, also from the business association, of the bagging of the meters on Woods Hole. It's the same limited ones that were done last year, which I think is twenty-eight of them?
Twenty-eight or twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight or twenty-nine. Most of the ones that are on Luscombe Avenue and on Water Street to the Candle House.
I move it as written. Second.
Okay. And what this has been recommended on our motion is January first through March thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. I think the request from the Woods Hole group was actually earlier than January first, that they were hoping it was gonna be before, around December fifteenth is what I would think they were asking for. So just to be aware that that's different than what our written motion is.
I'll amend it to be soonest.
Okay.
Same here, right?
Mm-hmm.
I, I think it makes, it makes sense to open it up for the holidays.
And I, just a question, this suggested motion references the two-hour parking limitation?
Mm-hmm.
Again, meters are only good for two hours?
Okay.
You're not supposed to feed the meters, you're supposed to leave parking management. So when we did this last year, we made the meters, meter bags, they say, the two-hour free parking.
Okay, they say it right on?
Says right on the bag.
Thank you. Great.
But do we have a limited on two hours by regulation?
For, because of the area and the meters, it's, that area is designated two hours.
It is, okay.
So that's why we enforce it for two hours.
Okay.
One of the, I'll tell you, I, I met with the business people. I think originally, the request was, you know, sooner than later, but it was to go into April. When I met with the business leaders, they requested the, the March date, because they said they started getting busy in April, and they requested the bags be removed. So that's why that date there. And the only other issue that came to light last year, it seemed to be a successful program. However, there were several people who just enjoyed free parking all day, every day. That will be different this year, and I've actually spoken with Catherine about that too, just to, just to make her aware, because we are going to start enforcing it. We have a person down there to enforce the meters and everything else, is that two hours, they went out and moved the car to the next spot, and then to the next spot, and then to the next spot. Well, that's not two-hour parking. It might be in each spot, but you're basically got eight hours on the road. And those cars will be enforced, we'll be taking action against them. cars will be enforced, we'll be taking action against them.
And to remind the Woods Hole Group, is, this is just those twenty-eight hour, twenty-eight meters. The other meters will still be in full effect and enforced under feeding them. And to remind people, the regulation is actually, it's a two-hour limit even at the meters, that there is the option of enforcing and chalking tires that if you are there beyond that period. I don't think that's our intent, but...
No, it's not, but that's, it's, and it says on there, you know, maximum two hours.
I have a question for the chief. You said that the business people were concerned about letting this duration, you know, go into April.
Go beyond March.
Would you think they'd be objecting to starting it earlier than January first of 2016?
Probably not.
Their request had been for earlier.
Okay.
Anyone on the public, like, any more questions for the chief, or anyone on the public wanting to comment on this? Do we want to thank Catherine for at least making the bags last year?
Absolutely.
And they are very good bags, heavy-duty, and they'll probably last a few years.
But they won't fit on the meters.
By design?
With, well, let me explain, smart meters, you won't need the bags. Because the smart meters, I can program the twenty-nine meters to say, "Free, two-hour parking."
Can we give them to Andy for the Heights?
If we buy smart meters for everywhere, we'll have free two-hour parking, or whatever you decide.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I do hope we're not gonna buy any meters for Steamship Thirteenth though, for that lot. We know where those are.
But there are...
They go away in nine months.
Right, we don't need to worry about those.
We can use those on Clinton Ave.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
All right, so I do believe we have a motion in a second to place the bags on the meters in Woods Hole at the convenience of the parking attendant until March thirty-first, 2016.
Would you put a date, a starting date with that, instead of the January first?
At there can be, as soon as they can.
As soon as they can.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Okay. Thank you very much on the parking. On the third bullet, Mr. Sussos talked about on the parking.
Oh, yeah.
Based on our discussion, it does ask for whether the Board would like the police chief and the town manager to investigate other issues with the municipal lots. And certainly what I'm hearing from this Board is, absolutely.
Absolutely. Yeah, that'd be very helpful.
I don't think we need to have a vote on that, but that certainly was the sense I was getting.
Mm-hmm.
All right, next item is the bridge generator presentation, according installation for a generator for storm events. Mr. McConaty.
I believe the Board is, I'm gonna run through the, the presentation that was given last, a year ago, to the point where, basically, the presentation is for the generator, but basically where we came from and where we are. As you know, beautiful aerial picture of the Woods Hole, the bridge we were talking about right outside of Eel Pond. Bridge in operation, but the bridge opening, it opened in May fifteenth, 2009. The schedule of the bridge is it opens every half hour on request. So from May fifteenth through June fourteenth, is six a.m. to seven p.m. So that's twelve, thirteen, there's twenty-six openings. From June sixteenth to September fifteenth, there's, there's thirty openings, from six to nine. And from October fourteenth, from September sixteenth to October fourteenth, six a.m. to seven p.m. So it's back down to twenty-six openings. October fifteenth to May fourteenth is eight hours, so it would be sixteen openings. So the bridge is, is used quite a lot in the summertime, the vessels that are, the pleasure boats, recreation boats, and also the Woods Hole boats, with the, who use this bridge quite often. In 2012, 2013, this was the, it was Hurricane Sandy to New Jersey, it was a tropical storm to Massachusetts. But that storm, and also the storm right after that, followed right after that in December, flooded out the bridge, flooded out the base of the bridge. What happened is, it came up, at the time, this is what the back of the bridge looked like, it had metal railings, and, and the inside of the bridge had the, where the portals were, the beams go down through the abutment. The water came in both sides, and basically caved in the door on this side and came in on the other side. So that water level, that's actually at the stair level right in here, that's, that's even, right throughout the motor room. And this is it inside, it's a little hard to see, but that's the water line. The water line was actually above, above the motors, and that's what we want to keep away from doing. The motors are water-resistant, they're not waterproof, they're not made for submerging. So the first storm was on October twenty-ninth, the second storm was on February, February eighth. And what had happened during that time, it got flooded out twice, but the bridge was still down, because it happened in a seven-month period, so the bridge was still not working. These, this is the notice that we had out, that was for about six months until we were able to get the bridge back up and running. So what we were doing during that timeframe is, we had, Public Works was getting a phone call, and the Highway Department was going down, and they were manually cranking the, the motors up, they switch them back, there's two motors, you can go either the front motor or the rear motor. But to do that is very exhaustive. Each crank on that, you'd crank that thirty times, and the bridge might go up an eighth of an inch. So it goes up to seventy-six, eighty degrees, they have to have it fully open so sailboats won't hit the, they won't hit the top of the bridge, or the underside of the bridge. This is not a, it's basically not a dependable method of doing it. If we get a storm, that was tropical storm, if we get any type of hurricane or anything else, Public Works crews are gonna be out doing other work, and they're gonna be on other projects. So this is not something we really want to rely on or be for an emergency status. So what we did during that timeframe is, we had sandbags, because we had other storms and high tides that were coming up, we had sandbags and plywood sides. In the meantime, the engineering office, we were doing some redesign of this, this back bulkhead area. So this was all designed, designed in house, we had a, we, we, we looked at putting concrete side walls and raised the side concrete walls in, in the step of the concrete with the existing round. We were able to bring it up another nine inches, it's not much, but nine inches when you have those storms, when you get those flood tides, that the water does come up and over the top of the wall. Along with that, we also designed a steel bulkhead system, and I actually have a photo of that. With that, we also designed, basically, these steel portal plates that go over the portal holes, and it reduces the amount of water. There's rubber slides behind them, so it grabs a hold of the beam when the bridge is closed, and it, it basically minimizes the amount of seawater that would be able to go in during a high tide. And over on, on this photo was the, we designed a, we had a pump system designed for the, for the lower pit. At the time, we were using two-inch pumps, and, you know, it worked, it worked for the every day, so there was a little water coming in, it worked for the every day, but when we started getting those massive amount of water coming in both ways, you'd fill that counterweight pit up very, very fast. So we, we actually, what we incorporated, it is two three-inch pumps, they pump, each pump like four hundred gallons a minute. So they run in series where, they're, it's basically like a septic system would be a pump system, it's on floats, the, the water would come up, hit the first float, pump would go on, hit the second float, the second pump goes on, and it comes up to the top where there's a manifold, comes out the top of the bridge, and comes right out to where the portals are on the side of the bridge.
And what kind of power do those pump needs, those pumps need?
So, that's what we're looking at right now. To this, to this point, when we were using the older pumps, we were able to go down with a, we had a, basically a generator that the DPW, the Highway guys could throw in the back of the truck and bring it down there. And what they would do is, they would bring the generator down there, and they would run the, the pumps when needed. And then they would take the generator and they would store it inside the tender's house, and that's, with the gasoline and fuel, that becomes a dangerous situation also, you had the, the, the bridge tender, basically, could smell the fumes down there. These pumps are logic pumps, where do you have to even, I'm, honestly, I'm not even sure if that pump, that generator we have would run these pumps. These are much bigger pumps, so I think we're gonna be looking at a, a bigger generator anyways to run that. We installed, and this has already been all installed, we installed a emergency call-out center, so what happens is, with those pumps, once it hits the first float, and the first, the first pump turns on, a call-out, cellular call-out will go out to both the bridge tender, the main bridge tender, and also the assistant highway superintendent. When, if the second pump goes on, once again, it'll call out, it'll keep on calling, if, if there's no, if there's no answer on the other side, it'll just keep on calling back out. If the power goes out, also the same thing, it'll call out. This is the, the generator that we're looking at, it's a generate, it's a Generac Quiet Series generator, it's a twenty-two K for, for running the pumps, running the, and running all the auxiliary power down there on the bridge. To this point, when we've had storms, when we've had high tides, the, the bridge tender's been staying there basically long hours if we had some, to this point, to make sure that we didn't get a lot of water in the, in the little pit. At this point, so these are the, this is a photo showing the, the plates that were put on, comes right up to the bottom of the, the beams, and there's actually another plate that's recently been put on that comes up in the inside of these beams, it basically goes right up to where the bevel portion of the bridge is. If the water gets to be that high, there's gonna be more problems down in Woods Hole than, than this. And this, and, and once again, this is working with our maintenance contractor, NEL Corporation. They're our emergency contractor, they, they're on-site within two hours. So this is the back of the bridge, the, you saw in an earlier photo where they had the metal railings that looked like the, the, the bridge railings up above. This is the back of the bridge where we installed a, a, we actually had a local company install a, the diamond plate stainless bulkhead doors, it's got seals on it, so basically, it's, it's basically a watertight door. I mean, if there was that much pressure on it, some water would come in, but it's basically a watertight door. It's, it's, it's heavy, so it's got hinges on it when you open it up, and it's got chains on it if the wind blows on that to, to keep it open. So between this bulkhead door, raising up the concrete side walls and putting in those portal opens, it's, it did a lot for, for keeping the water out from when it comes in. But that's only for a, a nor'easter storm or a tropical, a tropical storm, maybe a small category one, you start getting bigger storms, you're gonna need more protection. So what we're looking at is, I think this is where we'll get in, I believe that the selectmen received a form from, from our office last week. Last year, the way we had left it, we had come to the selectmen, and we had left it of different alternatives to check out with the community to go out and look at different alternatives, alternatives. So one of the alternatives was this alternative right here, is where the, where the generator to be located is right next to the bulkhead. It's in a, this is in a, a landscape area, there's some shrubs in that area. We're trying to minimalize the, minimize the effect of that, so we're trying to keep it as, as, as small as we can in that area. And what had happened before was, we had a five-foot stand, and with working with the selectmen, taking the comments, and, and working with the contractor, working with the community, we were able to reduce the stand down to two and a half feet. So what you want to do is, that generator wants to be above the height of the motors in the lower, in the lower room. So we were able to lower it down to two and a half feet, it brought it down quite substantially, and then another two and a half feet for the generator. So you can't, you can't tell, but Mike Battell, the, the bridge tender, is holding the rod there, and it's reading five and a half feet. The, the second area was to be able to take the generator and put it between the fire department next door and the, the community building here. We had met, we had the contractor down there, we had our electrician down there, we had the, the community folks down there, and we were going through different options of pulling up the sidewalk, running under the sidewalk, running overhead, running on the lines, coming down through the buildings. And so we, we looked at that area, and we, we ended up actually getting in touch with Eversource. And Eversource is very strict on their cables and on their poles, anything that runs on their utility poles is their utility. The only thing that the town can do is put streetlights and streetlight cables onto the, and, and they control it, they hook them up. A third option was maybe coming out the, I don't wanna, I'll use this one instead, coming off the side of the building to maybe put a, something off the side of the building. There's basically not enough room for a platform area to be able to get around that 360 and be able, for, for our maintenance contractor to be able to work on that. And also, if we did put it in, it would take up a big portion of this walkway, it would actually be sticking out far, and probably block off at least half, half the walkway. So what we did is, oh, I already raised a forward one, we took that, that mock setup in the site in that they had, and we went over it as best as I could, this is AutoCAD, it's, it's rendering as best as I could. What we're looking at doing is, we'd like to see, to, to cover that base, to put in maybe a fence type to cover the base, and get a color the same as the, that's like a bleached shingle on the, on the bridge. And the generator also, it looks white, but it's, it's actually a grayish color, we can get, from the factory, we can get a, a company to, to also paint it, to maybe paint it the same color as the bridge. So it won't, won't stick out as a, the typical, it's like a lime yellow color for the, for the Generac color, and we'll be able to paint that up. So this is a view looking at it from this side, and what we did is, we also went up on Water Street, and we were able to take a look, I think these photos were also in the document that was received, and, but we were able to, to enclose the base area and, and the, and put a color to the, to the generator. So that's basically what it would look like, it's, it's, that's actually the, the wood platform that was there, so it's about a foot inside the timbers for the, for the walkway, once again, five and a half feet. The bridge tender, he's about five-six, five-eight, so that's right about the height of the, of the generator. And then also this one, looking from across, basically standing at the side of the fishmonger and looking across. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to basically blend this in as much as we can and kind of hide it as much as we can behind the bridge. The stand is not a really big problem, we can put that stand, and we can bump it right up to the bulkhead, it's the generator to be able to get around that 360 when they have to go in and do maintenance on it. So just to recap on it, what, what we have done to this point is, we have a twenty-four hour emergency maintenance contractor, he called, he's on-site within, within two hours. Luckily, this past summer, we've been making a lot of repairs down there, doing, we're getting better down there. We, we called him a lot less this summer, they made some trips. In the middle of July, August, contractor trying to get over the bridge and coming down, gets, takes some time. The portal beam covers, we put the steel beams over the portal beams going through the counterweight pit, the concrete steel well enclosure, we, we raised up the steel well, got rid of the, the steel iron rails, we put in the steel bulkhead door, we had, when the gas company was down doing all the gas services to Woods Hole, as a courtesy to us, we let them go down there and do that, and actually disrupting the Woods Hole area during that time when they were down there. They put a gas service under the sidewalk, and it's, it's, there's a meter on it now, it's actually ready to go. Counterweight pit, we, the pumps are already installed, the floats are installed, the, 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 the pumps are very heavy, so they have a hand crane actually that goes up, and it straps up to the top of one of the motors, if they need to come out, you can swing it down, it goes down in the pit. It's about twenty, it's about, I'd say, fourteen to fifteen feet deep, so if you have to climb down in there, and they can hook it up and, and bring it up if there's any problems. There's a high-water alarm, once again, it's a, the high-water alarm will go on if the, when the, when the pumps go on. The cellular call-out, it'll call the bridge tender and also call the highway superintendent. And just the last item on, on, for doing this is the standby generator. So where we are with the standby generator, we, we, with, working with FEMA, we had a extension, we had an original contract to get the work done. And with working with this and, and getting the fundings going to get all this work done, we had an extension, so it brought it up to this past November thirtieth. So on November thirtieth, I got ahold of MEMR, actually, again, and filled out all the documents and asked for another extension. We were back and forth with some emails, there were some questions, we answered the questions. We don't have the final authorization for the extension, there's no problem, so I, I imagine that's gonna be coming along as, as another email. So where we are right now is, MEMR wants to have all of it before they, we get reimbursed, we get reimbursed seventy-five percent of this. So before, we can put in our reimbursement for the pumps and for the controls and for the extra... reimbursement for the pumps and for the controls and for the extra electric panels and all the extra cable and wiring, they want to see what's going on with the generator. So, so that's one of the, another reasons why I was requesting to come forward tonight. So, yep, and that's it. So with, with the bridge, when the, when we lost power the first time and it got flooded out, it was out for six months, we're getting a lot of flack and we're getting a lot of phone calls from the Coast Guard. And we're getting the calls from, it wasn't Coast Guard, Cape Guard, it was Coast, Cape, it was Coast Guard, Boston. And they weren't happy because there was some communications that wasn't getting back and forth. They want, they need, know they needed to get into that harbor if there was ever a bolt fire or a fuel spill or anything like that. They wanted to be able to get in it. And actually, when we went down there and we had our highway crews go down there and crank up that bridge, the Coast Guard was right there. Each time we cranked it up, they'd come in and they'd come out. What it does is with the highway, with the, with the crews, the public works crews going down there and cranking that up, it's not an efficient way. They, since then, they were able to get a drill. It opens it up faster, but it's just, it's not really an efficient way for doing the bridge. So everything is in place right now. We're just looking for that final component. If we lose power, it'll be able to, to power the bridge, to power the generator, power the pumps. So that's basic, that's basically where we are. So I do believe, we did meet with the, the community down there. It was last February. As you can see, there's, there's snow, snow on, this is before it really started kicking in, but we met with the community. We, we had like the five different options and we went through them, and, and basically, the one option that did stick out was this option right here.
My comment is this is what you do on old Cape Guard, right? Just make it work?
I'll start with some questions then.
My father always said, you know, if it's, if it's not broken, keep on fixing it until it is, you know?
So when you cracked it manually, I mean, we're talking literally manpower.
It's manpower, correct.
It couldn't have been, the portable generator that we now have in town could not have been used to electrically do it.
At that time, everything was out. The motors were out, all the, the wires were all basically soaked. They took out the solenoids. They took out everything. So there was no, there was no power.
And so if the same kind of a water catastrophe happened, this generator wouldn't do it too good.
A new generator like this?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, actually, that generator would. If we had the same exact storm, that generator is up two and a half feet over the water.
No, but I'm saying if all the equipment in the pump house got the water damage that happened, the generator wouldn't have solved the problem.
It would not solve the problem, no.
No. I mean, but the problem wasn't we didn't have power then. The problem was it was all wet, that the pump, that the crank system was all ruined, not because we are out of power, but because it was, you know, so that's the reason we had to hand crank it.
Correct. It was, it was flooded and the pumps that were in it at the time were not handling the water that came in.
So my question is, if the pump house didn't get flooded, but we were without power, could the town's portable generator come down and get the bridge up and down?
It, it could. They'd have to, they'd have to retrofit it with, with another cable and through the back so they can backfeed it into the, into the, into the electric panel to be able to crank that up and down.
But that, that's a way of getting power to, I guess, I see two power issues. One is the power to get the bridge up and down, and I know that's a very high amount of voltage you need to.
Actually, it's not that bad. It's a 115. It's not that bad. Those, the, the motors are very, they're, they're highly efficient. It doesn't take as much as you would think to get the, the bridge up and down, the resistors in and the motors in.
So I guess what I was wondering is, couldn't a really good portable generator be stored in the fire station, the old fire station, and wheeled over for both, for pumps and the bridge in the times of necessary?
What will happen with that, though, is with it, when the, when the pumps go off and then when the water's coming in, and if there's no power down there, between the action time for public works to get from there and get down there and set it all up and pull it out and get it ready, you know, it's, it's a lot of value. This, I would imagine this probably happened in about 10 to 15 minutes, the water going through that.
Before we had all the, I mean, before you've done the five, the 10 other things you've done, right? I mean, we, the situation which had happened was a plywood door. We didn't have the nine inches you talked about. We didn't have the, the bulkhead door. We didn't have the portal coverings.
Yep.
None of those things were in place.
Yep.
And now you're going to have the emergencies, high water alarm to get that warning and...
And on Doug's point, is it, can the, the bridge operator who's there anyway, watching in that type of situation to kind of oversee, is that person trained or capable of, you know, starting the process until public works gets there?
Generator is? Yeah, they can. It's a, that's a heavy generator to do that. But the thing is, is it usually doesn't happen during the daytime with its man. It happens over the night times. That's, that's the areas that they're looking at when it's, when it's unmanned.
So you would schedule someone, you'd know the storm was coming, or you would know, I mean, we know about these big storms.
It happens actually more than just storms. A lot of times, they get high wa, they get, they get flood times, they get high water tides. I think if we talk to the highway superintendent to get the hours of the, the bridge tender, he's, he's babysitting the bridge a lot.
So he's there anyway.
But we need the power to go out to have this problem exist. I mean, the pumps are going to be working, running off of power that we have.
Yep.
And keeping the water out. It's only when that happens in conjunction with the power going out.
If there's a power going out. Now, with the, with the bridge tender's house, the way the power's set up with EnStar is it goes down Millfield, it comes up the other side over Albatross and comes up Water Street. So the bridge tender's house is the last building on the, on the grid. And there is, in the, in the August timeframe, we've had problems down there with the power. And, you know, it does lose the power down there. I'm sure the admin can talk more about the, the power on, on Millfield Street. But you get some pretty high winds down there blowing with all the above overhead wires, you know?
Woods Hole Business also wants us to bury all the wires, right?
Yeah. Actually, if you take, actually, I had some photos. I didn't have them with them now, but if you looked, took a look at some of the utility poles going down Water Street, there was a lot of heavy, heavy, thick cables. I mean, those, those poles are maxed out. Some of them are bending a little bit, then maxed out.
Any other questions from the board? Any public comment?
Well, just a quick comment. I'm, I'm not sure you want to force a bridge tender to occupy that area if you're in the middle of a high hurricane. I'd much rather see it come on automatically if there, if there's a capability of doing that.
Catherine Bumpus, Woods Hole Community Association. I think there's no question that a hurricane will, will even flood the generator. It will, it will overwhelm us. This might solve a few high water events. We've had one high water event that was unpredicted that, that it might have helped with. It's a very big piece of machinery. We appreciate that, that Peter was willing to come down and build the mock-up. I have some pictures of the mock-up where they're, it's taller than the people. I don't have them to project, but if you want to. It, it's hard because that, this is one of the few places in Woods Hole where you can access the water. You can lock down. You can be right there. There's a dock here that the town owns. We have the community hall. We have a gallery in the back. It will be that much more industrialized and less appealing, even gray, even on an enclosed stand. My children looked at it and said, oh, look, they're putting a sarcophagus there because it's bigger than a coffin. So we would really love to find a, a different place for it. We haven't been able to do that, and, and I appreciate the willingness to talk about that. I don't know that it will really solve the problems. It, we will not solve the hurricane problems. It might solve an occasional high water event. Is that worth it? I don't know. One of the other concerns that I've had since I looked at the photographs again is are we really far enough away from the windows of the community hall? The installation guide requires five feet from any opening in a, in a structure, and I'm not sure we're really five feet from the basement windows of the community hall. So I assume Peter will take a look at that. Nobody I know has, has said that they like this or that it's a good place for it or that it's a good idea. I didn't ask everybody to send you emails on this one because it, I'm not quite sure how we solve it, but it is not a welcome addition to the village.
So are you, are you implying that it's better not to solve it and just leave things the way they are?
I think the high water alarms would be a big help. I think that a portable generator could probably solve those if, if it could run the pumps with the high water alarm. You would have enough time to, to get it set up and plugged in. This would come on automatically. It will test automatically on a regular basis so that it will be something else generating noise in the village and pollution because that's why it can't be near windows. So I think there might be other ways that could solve it. I, I know that this is FEMA money that looks like free money, so this is one solution that, that seems, seems very committed to. So the, the last time, the, the most recent time that I'm aware that the water started coming up, the one-way check valve, which is, comes into the bottom of the stairs jammed, and the way that was discovered, the alarms were not yet set, the, the bridge tender happened to take a look and saw water bubbling up. And, and Mike Susa came down and solved the problem, luckily. There were lots of comments when, when the bridge was designed. Thank you, Bechtel Parsons Springerhoff, for putting something in the flood zone for the town to cope with. But we are where we are, so.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I could make a comment. Just as an aside to the board, obviously, we've been working on this for well over a year, and I appreciate Peter's steadfast efforts to, to reach out and look at options. I know he's looked exhaustively at options and unfortunately, including things like hanging them on the bridge tender's building with the building, building code would not allow. This is the only site that we can identify and be comfortable that is going to work. Peter can certainly double-check that five-foot question that was just raised, but I guess what I want to remind the board is we're talking about emergency conditions. We're talking about a fail-safe system. We're talking about public safety, including Coast Guard, cooperating with the Coast Guard. And at a time of emergency, I'm very uncomfortable relying on a portable generator. We're dragging around roads. When trees are coming down, roads get blocked, people get delayed, and a matter of a few minutes delay means we've just wasted tens of thousands of dollars in pumps again. Without regard to the unfortunate decisions made on design of this bridge, which put the important portions of the bridge in harm's way, to me, it's about risk management. And at a time when we may have catastrophic conditions in Woods Hole and elsewhere, is not the time to tell people that, well, you know, we just didn't think it would happen or the, it didn't, the incidence wasn't great enough, or we thought that relying on manpower responses would get it done. But we know by tough experience in an emergency, unpredictable things happen. You can't always rely on responses within certain limited times and everything working. And as close as we can get to, the closer we can get to fail-safe, the, the better we are prepared for potential catastrophes. And that's the only spirit within which we bring this to the board. Having exhausted, we think, other options.
I guess that, the point you've just made is the one that keeps me not as thrilled about it, is that I don't feel this is fail-safe as, I mean, I don't think we can get any better than that, but it's not a fail-safe system because the difference between what this is going to do when the water really gets up there will be the exact same situation where we're going to lose the money on the pumps, we're going to lose the money on electrical because the generator itself is underwater. And then, then we're in trouble.
But it gives us that margin that we don't have now.
I guess, you know, I agree.
Within those certain storm events that we now have no protection on, and I personally worry about whether we can get a portable generator in timely enough and have the manpower when they're possibly reacting to other emergencies in town.
Yep.
It's a judgment call. We respect that. And we, all we can do is come back to the board and say, you know, what's your pleasure? This is as far as we can take it. There is reimbursement money, but it's not about that. It's about doing what we think in the public safety sense is in the best interest of the community. And I recognize aesthetics are not always what we would prefer. But we think we can camouflage it reasonably well so that it is not as obtrusive as might be otherwise.
Any other questions from the board?
Just, just to throw a couple of numbers out there too. I think when we're doing these, with, with these reimbursements with our contractor, we're, we're looking at about 65 to 75,000 for everything that we did. We did a lot of it in-house, so the portals, the bulkheads, the raising of the, the concrete, the steel doors, all the electrical panels, the gas meter, everything is 65 to 75. When we, when the bridge was knocked out, that one time the bridge was knocked out, not only did we lose six months' worth of the bridge, but we're still counting it over 130,000. So we doubled just that one time being knocked out. So true that it's not a, it's, it'll take care of the storms. It'll take care of the, the, the heavy storms. It'll take care of the category. You start getting up higher than that, you know? And, and I, I believe when, when it was first designed, the state knew it when they were designing it. It was, the motors are basically, the center line of the motors are at the design high water of the, the design high water for the, for the, for the channel. So there's not much room. It's already, it's already below. And so we had some back and forth with the state with some letters and some documents back and forth, but they got bigger fish to fry right now, so.
Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the proposed generator.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Done. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a, an interview for two committees, for the Affordable Housing Committee. And we have two vacancies and we have one applicant, Jessica Lambert. You can introduce yourself and...
Affordable Housing Committee is Patricia Hurley. They switch the order of their resumes.
All right. Sorry about that. So the Affordable Housing Committee is Patricia Hurley. Patricia, I'm sorry, if you would tell us about yourself and why you'd like to serve on the Affordable Housing Committee.
I have sort of gone full circle in the last 20 years with affordable housing and started out as a single mom 20 years ago with three children, looking for an affordable place to live in Falmouth, and that was a very, very difficult task. I entered six lotteries for an affordable home and came out a loser in all six of those, but was able to get an affordable home through a resale in 2005. I then got on the board of the Falmouth Housing Trust. I was so grateful that I was able to have a home and that I wasn't at the risk of, of having rent raised or the landlord deciding they wanted to sell the house. So, so that was a, a wonderful experience. So I got on the board of the Falmouth Housing Trust so I could work with them and help other people in the same condition that I, I was in. And after I served on that board for three years, I am now, I was asked to be a participant in the housing study. So I was interviewed by the consultant for the town and participated in that. And now I started in March of 2015, a new job at the Falmouth Housing Authority. So I see every day what the need is for affordable housing in our community. So I was asked by several members of the board to think about coming on board, and I enthusiastically committed myself to going to the, I've been going to the meetings since July, probably, I think, June or July. And I know the board needs more members, and I feel that I can really contribute in a lot of different aspects because I have a lot of different perspective on the different aspects of affordable different aspects of affordable housing.
Any questions? Mr. Patterson?
Well, actually, a comment, uh, I've been attending the Affordable Housing Committee meetings and Trish, as she has just mentioned, has just voluntarily participated for the last six months or so, and has been a significant contributor to the dialogue and discussing all of the issues associated with affordable housing, so I think she'll be a welcome member.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for applying. Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
For a term ending on June 30th, 2018. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Congratulations and thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next is the Human Services Committee, and this is for Jessica Lambert. If you'd please introduce yourself and tell us why you'd like to serve on this committee.
Um, hello, my name's Jessica Lambert and I'm a member of the Falmouth Community, and, um, I would like to serve on this commu- uh, this committee because I have had a long history of working, uh, with special needs students. Uh, my mother was a special education teacher, I used to volunteer, um, with that group of students, I would use to go out with them. Um, I have also, she was also a single parent. Uh, I watched a lot of the needs that come with, the struggles that come with being a single parent, and I would like to contribute to my community in that manner. I don't have a lot of working experience in that field. I, my education and, uh, background is in energy science, however, I am a human being, um, and I would like to help other human beings as well, so that's basically my work experience in human services.
Questions from the board? Ms. Moffett?
With your personality and as you were talking to us, um, what is your feeling in agreeing with, um, with members on a board that maybe it isn't the best thing to happen? We'll say it's a disagreement. How, how do you handle being on a board with other people and there's an irritation there? Where there is something that you disagree with?
If, um, firstly, my personal opinions are not always necessarily what's best for the community. If something is best for the community and it's not reflected in my personal opinions, I would hope to have the forethought to separate those two worlds. However, I would hope that we would discuss the matter and come to an accord that would best reflect the needs of the community.
Do you have the feeling that your voice has to be heard and that's the voice that everyone needs to listen to? If you have an idea and there's suggestions, is it your voice that needs to be heard, or do you listen to other board members?
Um, I believe that I listen to other board members. I'm not them, but I haven't heard any complaints, so. I have volunteered, uh, with this committee for, um, the past few months, and thus far, it's been a very welcoming situation.
I am sure these questions are kind of a surprise because usually, we talk about your background or we talk about your ideas or your interests, but I think that, um, possibly, we need to know what the personality is of the person we're appointing, and that's the reason for my question. I know it's, it's, probably, you've never even thought about that, but, um, we need to have board members who get along with the other board members and give respect to what is being decided on, and that's my purpose in asking you.
Well, I believe in respecting my fellow committee members, um, and I hope that I haven't disrespected anyone thus far, but, um, I believe that it is always important to understand the personality of the people you're working with.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm thrilled that we can have someone from the White House come and work on our committees, though. I was quite impressed with your experience in working, both as an intern and the White House Council on Environmental Quality, so. Any other questions?
All right, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Jessica Lambert for the position on human services, term ending June 30th, 2018.
We do have three vacancies, so we're filling one of them, we'll still have two more vacancies.
The second.
More people. We have a motion, a second, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Jessica.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, the next is just a, the Recreation Committee, uh, they need to appoint one of their members to be their representative to the Gulf Adviser Committee, and our job is to affirm that appointment, and they have appointed David Jarvis as their representative. So I would entertain a motion to affirm this appointment.
Some move.
Second.
Motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. I'm going to declare a four-minute recess, we've been here since six o'clock and we deserve a little break.